Away from the building. Our staff will provide direction and assistance. In the case of our tornado warning, we ask that you exit this room into the hallway, where we will all remain until it is safe to exit. In the event of an active shooter in the building, if there's an accessible escape path, please run and try to evacuate the premises. If you can't evacuate, please find a place to hide where you're less likely to be found and lock any doors that you can. And as a last resort, and only if your life is in imminent danger, please fight. Our staff will provide additional direction and assistance on what to do. Thank you for your attention.
Eternal God our Father, we give thanks for another day. Thank you for changing up the temperature, but never change our minds to do the wrong thing for our citizens. We pray that you will bless us and keep us and guide us and direct us, that we will make the right decisions to make our county a better place than we used to live. Bless us as we serve through Christ our Lord, we do pray. Amen.
In the general package, we have the minutes of the previous meeting. There are no additional directions. Questions? All in favor, let me know by voting on high.
Aye.
All opposed? Here are none of the minutes offered. A public hearing is called for all relatives to the proposed schedule standards and rules to be used in 2024 for real property in Edgecombe County. Mr. Peters, would you please read the public comment?
Yes, sir. The proposed schedules, standards, and rules to be used in the 2024 reappraisal of real property in Edgecombe County have been presented to the board of commissioners. A copy of the schedules has been placed in the office of the planning manager and in the office of the tax assessor, where they will remain available for public inspection. A public hearing on the proposed schedules, standards, and rules will be held by the Board of County Commissioners at their regularly scheduled meeting on Monday, October 2nd, 2023, at 7:00 p.m. in the John F. Fulton Commission's room in the administrative building 201 St. Andrew Street, Pardale, North Carolina, 2786. Teresa M. Lewis, Edgecombe County Tax Administration.
And so, Mr. Chairman, so as you know, was presented for your consideration and review at your last meeting, the new schedule of values. We're in the revaluation process. So now we have, give the opportunity for our citizens to respond to the schedule of values, hence the public hearing tonight. Ask Ms. Teresa Lewis, our tax administrator, if there's anything she got a crowd tonight. There she is. Anything you need to add to that?
Yes, sir.
Alright, thank you.
Anybody like to call for public comments from the public at this time? Anybody would like to speak on this public hearing, please unball and state your name and address for the public right now. Anybody to speak? Here are none. I'd like to join the public hearing.
No actions.
I'd like to join the public. I have number two. A public hearing is called for all to receive citizen input regarding a recent zoning request for property located on Colonial Road, Pardale, AR 30 to R 20. Public hearing is called for all. Mr. Peters, would you please read the public comment?
Yes, sir. Public notice, the theory I gave in that a public hearing will be held by the Board of Commissioners of Edgecombe County on Monday, October 2nd, 2023, at 7:00 p.m. in the John F. Fulton Commission's room, second floor, county administrative building 201 St. Andrew Street, Pardale, North Carolina. To consider an act on a request to rezonate property owned by Meadowbrook Properties LLC, located on Colonial Road, Pardale, also identified as parcel number 472668966200. The applicant's petition does request to rezonate property from AR 30 Rural Residential to R 20 Mixed Residential District. Copies of the proposed zoning map amendment are available for public inspection during business hours 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. in the County Planning Office, 205, County Administrative Building 201 St. Andrew Street, Pardale, North Carolina. All parties and entities and all interested residents are liable to enter through credit and make their use tonight. This is the 20th day of September, 2023, by order of the Board of Commissioners of Edgecombe County, Angie Mondo, Culture Board.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to call for Ms. Katina Braswell, our planning director to give staff report on this matter.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Case number 23, RZ02. Mr. C.B. Dotch is on parcel from AR 30 to R 20. The property is located at Colonial Road, near US 258 South intersection. Parcel number 472668966200. Acreage is approximately 10.6 acres. The property is on AR 30 Rural Residential. All adjacent properties are also zoned AR 30. Mr. C.B. Dotch's request to rezonate property from AR 30 Rural Residential, R 20, is consistent with Edgecombe County's adopted policy guidance, as expressed in the 2014 Comprehensive Plan, based on that is consistent with future land use category set for the subject parcel. After the conclusion of a legislative public hearing, the Board of Commissioners shall decide the conventional zoning application in accordance with the standards in Section 237H Review Criteria. The decision shall be one of the following: approval of the application, denial of the application, approval of a revised application, or remand of the application to county staff for further consideration. The decision shall be based on legislative discretion of the Board of Commissioners, taking into consideration the recommendation of the planning board and the standards in Section 237H Review Criteria. In making its decision, the Board of Commissioners shall adopt a written statement of reasonableness and consistency with the county's adopted policy guidance in accordance with Section 160D 605 of North Carolina's General Statutes.
At this time, I'd like to call for public comments. Can see anybody who's speak on this public hearing? Is there anybody to speak? Here are none. I'd like to resign the public hearing. And the recommendation, the public planning board, consideration of the proposal. Do I get a motion? That is today's motion to approve the application.
Yes, well, if that's what the motion is.
Motion to approve that?
Yes.
Right, yes, sir. Questions? All in favor, let me know by voting on high.
Aye.
All opposed? Here are none. Any questions?
Yes, sir.
A public hearing is called for all to receive citizen input regarding a recent zoning request for property located at 12615 US 64 Alternate West, Rocky Mount, from AR 30 to B 2. The public hearing is called for all. Mr. Peters, would you please read the public comment?
Yes, sir. Public notice, the theory I gave in that a public hearing will be held by the Board of Commissioners of Edgecombe County on Monday, October 2nd, 2023, at 7:00 p.m. in the John F. Fulton Commission's room, second floor, county administrative building 201 St. Andrew Street, Pardale, North Carolina. To consider an act upon a request to rezonate property owned by Donna Matthews and Elizabeth Hill, located at 12615 US 64 Alternate West, Rocky Mount, also identified as parcel number 387070148100. The applicant requests to rezonate property from AR 30 Rural Residential slash AR 30 Single Family Residential to B 2 General Business District. Copies of the proposed zoning map amendment are available for public inspection during business hours 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. in the County Planning Office, 205, County Administrative Building 201 St. Andrew Street, Pardale, North Carolina. All parties and entities and all interested residents are liable to enter through credit and make their use tonight. This is the 20th day of September, 2023, by order of the Board of Commissioners of Edgecombe County, Angie Mondo, Culture Board.
Yes, sir.
Again, Mr. Chairman, I'll call on Ms. Braswell to give the staff report.
Case number 23, RZ01. Applicants request to rezonate parcel from AR 30, R 30, to B 2. Applicants are Donna Matthews and Elizabeth Hill. The property is located at 12615 US 64 Alternate West, Rocky Mount, parcel number 387070148100. The property consists of approximately 5.7 acres. Property is owned AR 30 Rural Residential, R 30 Single Family Residential. All adjacent properties are also zoned AR 30, R 30. Ms. Donna Matthews and Ms. Elizabeth Hill request to rezonate property from AR 30 Rural Residential, R 30 Single Family Residential, to B 2 General Business District. The purpose of the request is to allow for commercial use at the above referenced property. Applicants plan to sell property for establishment of a commercial business. The principal use must meet zoning requirements in the B 2 zoning district per Unified Development Ordinance Table 4.2.1 Principal Use Table. The planning board voted unanimously to forward the rezoning request to the Board of County Commissioners with a favorable recommendation. The planning board stated the rezoning from AR 30, R 30, to B 2 is consistent with Edgecombe County's adopted policy guidance, as expressed in the 2014 Comprehensive Plan, based on that is consistent with the future land use category set for the subject parcel. After the conclusion of a public hearing, the Board of Commissioners shall decide the conventional rezoning application in accordance with the sections and standard, standards in Section 237H Review Criteria. The decision shall be one of the following: approval of the application, denial of the application, approval of a revised application, or remand of the application to county staff for further consideration. The decision shall be based on the legislative discretion of the Board of Commissioners, taking into consideration recommendation of the planning board and the standards in Section 237H Review Criteria. In making its decisions, the Board of Commissioners shall adopt a written statement of reasonableness and consistency with the county's adopted policy guidance in accordance with Section 160D 605 of the North Carolina General Statutes.
At this time, I'd like to call for public comments on this public hearing. Is there anybody who's speak? Anybody who's speak? Here are none. I'd like to resign the public hearing. And consideration of approval of this request. Is there a motion?
I would make a motion to approve of this request.
Questions? All in favor, let me know by voting on high.
Aye.
All opposed? Here are none of this group. Thank you.
Thank you.
You guys have a comment, Mr. Peters?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. First scheduled appointment is we have Ms. Tanya Heaton, our corporate extension director, who is here tonight to recognize some of our 4H youth for their participation, and some of them have won some recent state competitions.
Yes, good evening. I am honored to introduce some of our, what I call, local celebrities. So these are our youth from Edgecombe County, and it's fitting that we're recognizing them tonight, because this is the start of our National 4H Week. So thank you for your time and effort in letting them come and join in this celebration. These 4Hers have worked very hard in their project area. They have competed not only on the county level, but district and state. And then, in the next month or so, we've got some going on to national competitions. So we've had a wonderful summer of activities. I hope you'll agree, we do have some awesome young people that are here with us tonight. And along with that, we have a lot of family support, and that's the reason we have such a successful program. I'd first like to introduce some of our presentation participants. I'd like to call on Abby Bradley, if you'll come forward. And if we can do a group picture, can we have them come up and we'll get a group at the end? Abby Bradley participated this year in our Pork Char Grill Competition. She won not only district gold, but also state. So we have some good grillers here. We now have Thomas Bradley. Thomas Bradley also participated in the Turkey Char Grill Competition, winning both district gold and state gold for his grilling presentation, and this will allow him to go to Louisville, Kentucky next month to compete. Yes, we will be doing a practice November the 2nd. So I'll invite y'all to that. So he'll be practicing again. Next, we have Emma Britt. I think she's on this side. Ms. Emma also participated in our Small and Companion Animals category. She won district gold and state silver. Next, we have Savannah Dale. So Savannah presented at our district activity day, as well as state presentation. She won district silver in the open category, and she talked a lot about North Carolina facts and government, so that was great. Next, we have McCray Kaiser. McCray presented at the district and state competition in his forestry presentation, and he won district gold and state silver. Next, we have Peyton Kaiser. He also participated in the Chicken Char Grill Competition. He won both gold in district and state, and he will next month go on to the national competition in Louisville, Kentucky. Next, we have Seth Peel. He participated in the Careers and Entrepreneurship category, and he won both district gold and state bronze. Next, we have Jada Smith. Jada participated in the Communication and Expressive Arts category. She won district gold and state silver for her presentation. Next, we have Jolena Sunbaum. She participated in the Livestock Production Presentation, winning district gold and a state silver. Next, we have Logan Sunbaum. She participated in the Seafood Grilling Presentation category. She won both district gold and state silver. Next, we have Faith Wumble. Faith participated again in our Livestock Production Presentation category. She won a district silver and also participated in our state competition. And last but not least, for our presentations, we have Levi Wumble. He participated again in the Livestock Production Presentation category. And I always have to tell this little story, might embarrass him. But the first time he ever gave, he was going up to give his presentation, and the judge just said, "Are you ready?" He said, "I was born ready." So he did really good district gold and state gold for that.
You got coffee there.
Yes. So we also would like to recognize, and if y'all will stay out there, because there's a few more that we want to recognize. Our citizenship program, we have Jolena Knight, and as well as Jolena Sunbaum, if you'll raise your hand. Both of these girls represented Edgecombe County at a 4H Citizenship Focus Event this summer. In addition to that, they also competed in a very intensive application, resume, interview, essay competition statewide, and they won, and will be going to National 4H Congress in November in Atlanta. So kudos to them. The other thing that we would like to recognize are our 4H Project Record Book winners and portfolio. And it's a lot of record keeping along with 4H. So we have McCray Kaiser, Peyton Kaiser, if you will, just raise your hand. Abby Bradley and Thomas Bradley. A lot of those got district gold and state silver in some of, in one or two categories statewide. So good job with that. And for the 4H portfolio, this is a three-year project. We have Peyton Kaiser was recognized at 4H Congress this summer. He won district and state gold for his forestry and natural resources portfolio. So great job. With that, a lot of their work also goes into their scholarships. So a lot of the record keeping that they're doing helps on scholarship applications, as well as college. And we'd like to recognize Peyton Kaiser, who received a $1,000 scholarship for the Edgecombe County 4H Livestock. As well as, yeah, that's good. And Jolena Sunbaum was recognized. She received a Rachel Thomas and Dr. Thomas 4H Foods and Nutrition for $2,500, in addition to a showmanship circuit of additional $500. So good job to her. The one thing about these two that I'll say, both Peyton and Jolena, they were honored this summer at 4H Congress, and they were inducted into the North Carolina 4H Honor Club. That is the highest honor any 4Her can receive in North Carolina. So good job to that. And I'll leave you with this. We're all trying to build youth and their capacities and life skills into leaders and new single leaders here. But I would like to highlight Logan Sunbaum. She is one of our officers for the Northeast District. So good job, Logan. They are learning how to campaign and talk to people about voting, so they have learned a lot about that. So Logan is our district officer. And Jolena Sunbaum, she's wearing the infamous green jacket. She is representing the state 4H. She is our president this year, comes from Edgecombe County. And I'm not sure about our history, but I would say this one was probably our last Edgecombe Vice President for the state. So we've got another one right here. And just thank you all to not only the 4Hers that are here, but the parents and the volunteers that make this program happen. Thank you for your time and effort tonight. Thank you.
Well, let's give all the members a call, please. I'll take a reaction to what I'd like to say, but I just think I'll extend the service. Sometimes this is, these are good things that are going on, and I've commented that sometimes the public does not see. I'm just such a time as we make it available. Thank you so much for that, and we see you as future young people we see here. And make your policy decisions for the rest of the county. For some of us, they were going to be cold. Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
So if, right in the middle, if y'all could park the seat there a little bit, and that someone won't get that emblem on your face, it'd be nice if it picked up.
Take it, everybody?
Everybody with a smile.
Any comments for the board? Thank you.
Congratulations.
Can you go over, say?
I'd just like to say, I'm very proud. My cousin Jada, who's here, my good friend Leah, who I'm trying to mentor and make sure she gets way ahead of college. Great student. I'm excited that all of you. And I remember going to 4H, but we didn't have quite as much.
Thank you so much.
Thank y'all.
What was that? The next scheduled appointment tonight is regarding, as you know, at your last meeting, your last regular meeting. At your last regular meeting, we had a number of citizens to come with some concerns and complaints about our non-emergency medical transportation. And certainly those, you know, their concerns for them, certainly concerns for us. And so we wanted to provide some follow-up to that tonight, if we could, and if you want. And so, just to sort of lay the foundation, and then Ms. Battle, Ms. Betty Battle, our DSS Director is going to come with some information. And we also have with us tonight Mr. Todd Gardner, the Director of Tar River Transit is going to come and talk as well. But as you know, we have, Medicaid provides transportation for medical-related needs. And it's a service that we provide through outside contractors. Tar River Transit, which is the regional transportation provider for us, as well as many other entities, is the primary provider of that service for us. We also have a secondary contract, we've had a secondary contract to provide, to supplement that service. Our procurement policy and procedures requires that, at times, if we go out to seek other proposals. We did that here relatively recently. Based on a rating system, we went with a new contractor. Ms. Battle is going to talk a little bit about that process. Admittedly, there, that transition from one contractor to another inevitably can be a little bumpy in the transition. And we've seen that in this case as well. And so our goal has been to, as best as we can, for our staff to work with both Tar River Transit and our new secondary provider, the name of that company is Flowby, to smooth out that transition as best as we can. Ultimately, the goal is to make these options available to our citizens who are eligible to get this service. The options for someone who's on Medicaid, if they need assistance with transportation, through us, Edgecombe County right now is Tar River Transit, the new company, which is called Flowby. The third option is, a person can get a family member or friend or other relative to take them on to their appointment, and they can get reimbursed for the mileage based on the IRS mileage rate. So really, there are three options for that service. And so I just want, again, wanted to lay the foundation in response to concerns that were brought forth last month. And I want to call forward first, Ms. Betty Battle, who's our DSS Director, and she's going to give an overview of the process that our team went through in selecting a new provider, as well as other information maybe we can share.
Good evening. So Erin had asked me to come before the board this evening to discuss our bid process, when we bid out, when we bided out the non-emergency Medicaid transportation. And so I was just going to walk you all from the beginning of that process to the end. So on May the 30th is when we put the RFP in the newspapers. It was in the Rocky Mount Telegram and the Delve Reflector. On May the 30th, the ads ran on June the 3rd, the 6th, and the 7th and 8th of June. The cutoff date for the RFPs were June the 16th. And on May 31st, the RFP was posted on the Edgecombe County website with the same cutoff date, June 16th, 2023. The first two weeks of June, we received RFPs from five providers. On June the 20th, it's when I received notification from the staff person that was receiving the RFPs. We had in the newspaper that turned them into this individual, and they did. And so I got an email from her on the 26th saying, "Hey, they're all, when can we meet?" And so I got an email from her on the 26th saying, hey, they're all in, where can we meet? And we met on, um, June the 26th, that we did the bid opening. Well, we had two staff people present at the bid opening, one opened the bids and one recorded the meeting. We also reviewed on that day, the county's evaluation criteria form, which is what we use to rate, or what they use to rate the providers based on, um, the information that was submitted, if everything was submitted that was requested, um, the timeliness of the documents and just what their, um, scope of duties were. So we met on June the 29th to go over the ratings. And, uh, they were provided, uh, awarded points for qualifications, experience, cost, and understanding and approach. And when we looked at the understanding and approach, we looked at, um, when we posted the RFPs on the website, we also posted that, uh, these are the attachments that you need to submit on where you go to download those attachments. So for understanding and approach, some of them lost a lot of points because they didn't submit those documents. Um, the attachment, the required attachments were also listed in the newspapers, and like I said, it was listed on county website as well. Uh, on July 24th, um, Ms. McNeil visited the agency to sign a short-term contract with us that ran from July the 1st, 2023, through August the 30th, 2023, due to the incomplete status of the fiscal year 2324 contract. So she agreed to continue to to serve from July 1st to August 30th, and she signed the contract. She met with one, two staff people to do that. And then on, um, August the 28th, we sent out letters to the bidders notifying them that the contract was awarded to another provider. And on September the 1st, the contract was awarded to Flowby. And then on November, on September the 12th, we sent letters out to all of the riders, letting them know that the contract had switched from Fountain Transportation to Flowby. So that's pretty much our process, it's the process we've always used for, um, bid proposals. Uh, we try to keep it as clean as possible, and one person that opened the bids, but another person that recorded the bid, the, um, the, um, findings of the bids, and then we come back and we met, we met after they did the evaluation, I was not a part of that process. Those two people went out in different offices, did the evaluation, we met a couple of days later, they explained to me how they came up with their ratings, and we made the selection based on that. Any questions?
Okay, and and I've already, I've talked with Ms. Battle and expressed my concern that the residents were not told about the change until after the change had happened. So it's like getting back, it was kind of alerting them that this was coming up, I felt like we should have always sent the letter. And it's saying now that it really ended up going back, and the letter, the process had already changed. But also, as I, as far you said, it was a short-term contract. So when the former firm accepted that short-term, was it discussed with them that this is only short-term?
According to an email that I received from the person that met with her, her email says that she met with Ms. McNeil and explained to her that the contract was from July the 1st to August the 30th, and of course, it stated in the contract in several different places as well.
Now, in your letter to the former carrier, did you explain if there were any items why they did not get the contract?
No. We just simply stated that the contract was awarded to another provider. And it was, that was like a standard form letter, that the same letter went out to all the providers.
So did the bid go to the local bill?
Not necessarily, no.
Is there any way you can tell me, possibly, how much DSS, the difference between the previous carrier and the one that has the contract now?
What do you mean in terms of?
Does DSS save you any money with the new contract?
Well, DSS doesn't have to pay any money. This contract is strictly, um, state and federal dollars, county money is not in this contract at all. So they are reimbursed through the NC Track system, there are no county dollars in this contract. However, um, even though, although cost is not the sole criteria, it is one that the state stresses that we look at very strongly. But in this situation, the ones that we looked at, it wasn't just cost, we looked at things like, um, the website said, turn in all of these attachments, go to WWW doc whatever and download them and turn them in. We looked at things like that, they didn't turn them in then, they lost points.
That's what I'm saying, when you sent the letter, I think you should have done a little bit more detail, instead of just saying you did this contract. I would like to know why did you get the contract if I had the contract for two or three years, what's suddenly been changed that I didn't get it?
What changed is that we bidded it out, which, you know, when I talked to the county manager about it, he told me that based on the, I guess, some of the findings in our, um, audit, it was recommended that we start bidding out, um, our, I think it was a procurement process. And so, based on that, we started bidding out the contract, and so the contract was lost because it was bidded out and another provider got it.
How long this contract lasted?
One year.
So you're going year to year then?
It was year to year before.
And we can make the decision, the contractor gives us opportunity to extend it to another year if we want. We'll make that decision, we have to wait to see how it goes with the contractor, um, the need, all of those factors have to come into play when making that decision.
Anytime approximately, how many of our citizens rely on this transportation?
Three hundred and eighty. And that's total, and that's with, um, Tar River and the secondary provider as well.
But you know, with the secondary.
Yeah, we, um, we just got, was it, I think it was like two something for, two eighty something for Fountain and a hundred and something for Tar River.
And that can ebb and flow over a period of time, it's customer choice, so at any time, the customer can say, I prefer to ride with Tar River Transit instead of, or Vice versa, so that can ebb and flow over.
Or your relative.
Or your relative, right, we have very few that knew that, but they could, so it's, it's, it's client choice, which provider, or whether or not they go with a family member or friend. Private transport is what they call that.
So, so basically, what I think I'm hearing you say is that the entire process is based on that, um, information that was, was not shared, they did not, the other people did not make the decision.
Um, it actually ended up being a tie between Flowby and another company. But we kept calling the other company, or I kept calling the other company, and I did not get a response, so I moved ahead with Flowby. I didn't wanna keep waiting because we were already beyond July, um, June 30th.
But your procedure was followed.
Mm-hmm, yes. So it was actually a tie.
You know, question for the board.
Um, I've never heard of Flowby, so, did you compare, within their, uh, application, do they have to supply you with like, who they serve it for, or, you know, is that their first time in Edgecombe County?
Okay, so yeah, it's pretty much like Fountain, we've never heard of them, we contracted with them back in 2020. So we had to go, so they had to, I, I've never heard of them, let me put it like that. Okay, so when we contracted with them, this is the first time that they provided transportation services for Edgecombe County. And so with Flowby, yes, we did, we went online and we found out that they provided transportation, they also did, um, and he can tell you better than I can what the business do. But they are, I think they deliver medical supplies to hospitals, and so we did go on this website and we did look at them. And the information that they have to submit, the proposal, all of that information is included in the proposal as well.
Do you want to add another point?
Yes, pretty much.
Clearly aware of what the survey to fill out, and how they receive points or don't receive points. And they're told that all of the different documents need to be submitted in order to get home.
That is correct, it was listed on the Edgecombe County website, and I, I, I have a copy of that, and I also have a copy of the proof of the, uh, ad, proof of the ad that ran in the, um, Rocky Mount Telegram, the, um, Tar River, and the Delly Reflector in Greenville. And it tells you, this is what, you know, this is where you know you need to go at these, um, attachments.
So any specific company could lose points by not filling out all of the information that's included in the report?
Yes, absolutely.
And did everybody meet the June 16th deadline?
Yes.
And and just to add, the request for proposal document, uh, describes the rating criteria that you use in the number of payments.
But they're told exactly what you get paid for, what you don't get paid for.
No.
Anyone else? I have one. I'm going with it, no. No, you do it, I'm telling you, sit down, we can play additional questions. So, the next, the next, uh, what is, Mr. Park?
Yes, sir, it was Todd Gardner with Tar River Transit is here tonight.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Uh, as mentioned, my name is, uh, Todd Gardner, I am the Director of Tar River Transit. Uh, I work specifically for the city of Rocky Mount. Uh, I've been in this position now for going on about eighteen years. Um, the reason, first of all, I'd like to thank Eric Evans for allowing me to come down and address the board. Uh, I realize this is a sensitive issue, um, during this time, so thank you, Mr. Evans, for allowing me to come and speak on behalf of, uh, Tar River Transit. Um, the main reason why I'm here is to address the concerns, um, that were displayed by the citizens here in Edgecombe County relative to, uh, transportation, uh, specifically the Tar River Transit. Um, and I really want to, uh, correct any misconceptions about the service that we provide, uh, here in, uh, Edgecombe County. Um, to begin with, I just wanted to, to give you a, a kind of a background of, uh, what we do. Uh, Tar River Transit is considered a community transportation provider. What that means is that we are a public transportation provider, um, for the county of Edgecombe as well as Nass County. Uh, most counties and, um, I dare to say every county, uh, in North Carolina has a community transportation provider designated for that, um, specific county. Um, being a co- uh, community transportation provider, that, what that means is that we are sanctioned and supported by the North Carolina Department of Transportation, uh, NC DOT, which is stationed, uh, in Raleigh. Um, part of my, uh, job as administrator and director is, is that I, um, apply for funds, state funds, and sometimes federal funds, uh, on behalf of Edgecombe County, um, and those funds go towards, uh, expenses, um, that are associated with providing transportation, uh, here in the area. And those funds are, are called a Rural Operating Assistance Program funds, and I apply for those funds annually on the, uh, on behalf of Edgecombe County.
Mr. Gardner, I'm gonna pause you for one second, I'm gonna ask IT if they could turn his microphone up just a little bit.
Yeah, that counts. Kinda in that mic, plus.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, wow.
You can hold it.
That's alright. We did?
Yeah.
Okay. Alright, sorry about that. Um, so as, and to give you a little bit of history, Tar River Transit has been in existence, um, since 2002 as a, as the authority of Tar River Transit. Uh, we have been, uh, providing transportation before that, but we have been known as Tar River Transit, as that authority since 2002. Um, that authority is governed by what is called, what we, uh, is called an inter-local agreement. And that inter-local agreement is between the city of Rocky Mount, uh, Edgecombe County, and Nass County. Um, per that inter-local agreement, uh, there be, we have a transportation governing board, which is made up of a Nass County Commissioner, a Rocky Mount City Council member, and the Edgecombe County Commissioner, which, um, Reverend Wayne Hines has served, uh, on the board, at least since I've been in the position, and probably before that. Um, and so, basically, that is, that is the history of Tar River Transit and why, why we are considered the, the community transportation provider, because we are the public transportation provider, which is, um, supported by the North Carolina Department of Transportation, as opposed to, um, uh, Fountain Transportation or Flowby Transportation, they're considered private transportation providers. Um, the, and like I mentioned, the main reason why I'm here this evening is, is because of some issues that came up in the, uh, last meeting here, uh, last month. Um, I, I received a phone call to, uh, to view the video of the last meeting, and, and to my dismay, I heard some pretty disparaging, um, comments about Tar River Transit that I would like to, uh, personally address. Um, we were, um, well, let me explain the process of Medicaid transportation, which has been brought up, uh, in numerous meetings. Medicaid transportation is for, uh, citizens of Edgecombe County that are, that are Medicaid recipients, and they, and the, and it provides transportation to and from docs appointments, which Tar River Transit has been doing for, uh, quite some time now. Um, as far as, um, the process for which that.
I'm gonna push this a little bit closer to you, that is still.
Alright, thank you. As far as the process goes, um, any, any Medicaid recipient who has a doctor's appointment, um, they, uh, Medicaid alerts Social Services. Um, and then Social Services alerts, um, Tar River Transit through a referral, and then we in turn put them on the schedule. Um, because we transport, on average, we transport anywhere between four to five hundred passengers per day between Nass and Edgecombe County. We, um, have requested that those referrals get to us by at least two o'clock on the previous day, so that will allow us time to get those passengers, uh, on the schedule. Uh, a couple of years ago, we were alerted by, um, Social Services, Edgecombe County Social Services, that they had passengers that were receiving refer, they were receiving referrals from, referrals from passengers after two o'clock, which was what they referred to as a, as a overflow. So they thought it would be best to contract with an additional transportation provider to, um, adhere to that overflow, which, you know, we, at Tar River Transit, we didn't have a problem with that at all. Now, how that process was procured, how that contract was procured, and how that contract was subsequently, um, expired for, um, uh, Fountain, um, is not the concern of Tar River Transit, that's not, that's not, um, our business. But for some reason, during the last meeting, Tar River Transit was thrown into the fray of the argument, in my opinion, un- unfair. Um, I heard accusations of, we treat passengers like trash, um, we, we did not address the issue of a damaged wheelchair. We do not allow passengers with weight issues to utilize vehicle, um, wheel, wheelchair ramps. We pick up passengers when we feel like it, um, and we ask passengers to be ready at 3:00 AM for 6:00 AM appointments. Um, for that note, I'd like, I'd just like to say that, um, any ti, the only time that we, um, require that, anything close to that, is that we, we go to Brinkley once a week, and we also go to the Raleigh Durham area once a week. And we, we do those trips, we pick up everyone in the county, as well as Nass County, and we pick them all up at the same time, and we, and we provide that transportation and bring everybody back at the same time. And some of those appointments are early, so we do require for those out-of-town trips for the passengers to be ready, um, maybe two or three hours before their appointment. But otherwise, that is for local transportation, that is not a requirement of Tar River Transit. So, one of the things I did not mention was that the city of Rocky Mount, we contract with a transportation management firm, TransDev, and they handle all of the daily operations of our, of, um, of the, of Tar River Transit. Myself and my assistant, uh, Quinisha Corwais, we are Rocky Mount City employees. But the drivers, the, the dispatchers, they all work for this management company's, uh, TransDev. Um, also on staff at TransDev is the General Manager, Ron Cooper. And Ron Cooper has been in that position for like ten years now, and, and all that, all that Ron, Mr. Cooper repreaches is, um, safety and customer service. Now, I'm not about to stand here and say that Tar River Transit is perfect. Um, there are times, because the many people that we do transport, we may fall short of providing saccharal load of transportation. Um, anytime that. Um anytime that we do fall short, those those um issues are immediately addressed by by our staff. Um but at the same time, by and large, um Tar River Transit providing sacred reliable transportation is what we do. And what we have have been doing for the past um at least since I've been there twenty years. So to hear these remarks um was was um kinda took me aback a little bit. Because um I I kinda took that personally, because that's not the type of uh organization that I am the head of. We we've been providing transportation for Edgewood County for years now, um reliable transportation for years now. And I and I stand by that emphatically. And I also, now, while the citizens here, citizens here of Edgewood County, they have their right of to their opinion. Uh and they have their right to voice their opinion, and I respect their opinion, but I'm just here to categorically deny. Um the fact that that we treat our passengers harshly, or that that we um we fall short by and large of. Providing sacred reliable transportation. So as I mentioned, um I'd like to thank you, um the board, for allowing me to to uh address this issue this e- this evening. And I'm open to any questions. Uh the management company that we try uh that we use is uh TransDev. It used to be First Transit, but they were bought out by TransDev uh recently.
So I'm gonna ask you if if Rocky Mount Transit has received any complaints from any of these citizens? Especially ones who can't get over the lifetime. But since you said you have another company that actually handled that, do you know whether they actually received complaints?
They they, we we have received complaints, um if if you're speaking specifically for for these issues. Um once I, once I saw the video of the last meeting, I I had a meeting myself with uh Mr. Cooper and his staff. And and he alerted me that for the specific um allegations that were left against Tar River Transit during the last meeting. That um his him and his staff did not receive any complaints to um to those facts.
You have a question, Paul. So do you have a procedure for complaints? Did the other company receive it, or did you receive a copy, or did you get a copy of the other company?
Uh well, well, let me just clarify, you know, when when you when you speak of um the other company, it in essence. As I mentioned, Tar River Transit is the authority, but you know, we we contract with this management company, but. Everything is still considered under the umbrella of Tar River Transit, for which I'm responsible, and I take full responsibility. Um the um this the the staff is right there in the same office as I am. And so any any complaints, they do go directly to Mr. Cooper, with which he um addresses those complaints. And then when I meet with him weekly, he alerts me of those complaints, and also alerts me of the progress of how those complaints are being addressed and hopefully solved.
So complaints do go directly to you or Tar River Transit?
To Tar River Transit, yes, sir.
And they are investigated, and are the people notified in any type of form?
Um anytime that there is a complaint, what what we do, it is our policy to do what we call a follow-up, and that is with a phone call. Um and so any complaint that is led against Tar River Transit, it is it is investigated. Um and and then when once some closure has come to it, we do follow up with the passenger as to the status of that complaint.
And you say you had no complaint?
N- no. The complaints that were left against Tar River Transit during the last meeting, uh we had not received any complaints to that to that nature.
Well, I I I just want to comment from where you stated. In terms of the management company, that's just a contract between Tar River uh Transit and the management company. So any complaint coming in would be against, as far as the public is concerned, would be against Tar River Transit. We we didn't know, we didn't know that there was a management company.
Right.
So we we, our contract is with Tar River Transit, and that's what we expect to resolve these issues.
Right, but the management company is considered Tar River Transit, so so in essence that um any any. Any complaints led against Tar River Transit is handled by that management company.
I'm just saying from a public standpoint, we don't know that from uh Tar River Transit.
Right, exactly. Yes, sir, yes, sir.
Is is there the reason why you don't get the complaints too?
What, directly?
Yeah.
Um the main re-
Even though even though the company may be responsible, but but your knowledge of of what they are responsible for.
Oh, I have I have knowledge, um because um I I have been meetings with um the management company that handles uh the complaints. So I am alerted of of those complaints, and as I mentioned, I'm I'm right there in the office as well, so. Um I I'm 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 alerted of all complaints, either either right when it happens, or at least within um a couple of days. And and I've I've addressed some of those complaints myself.
The the I think the board is concerned with the idea of there are complaints uh is that, you know, they are investigating. And that the the complainants understand it's also a complaint, I think that's what the management company does. The allegations here, we don't know whether they're true or false.
Right.
The public allegations that were made here, and we contacted Tar River Transit, because you are our contractor. And so and and that resolution is between Tar River Transit and and the complaints.
Exactly.
Any other comments or questions?
I just have one clarifying for Miss Battle, could could you clarify complaints that you received as well? Have you received the complaint, those same complaints, or?
Well, we receive complaints against Flowby, and we've investigated them, every complaint we get. When it comes our way, we call them on the phone, we've got these five people, I think, in transportation. We send the emails, they call these people, and make sure that their appointment is set up correctly, they're giving they're giving them choice. They don't have to ride, it's up to them who they ride with. We offer the services up to them, if they say, I don't wanna ride with Tar River, and I don't wanna ride with Flowby, we don't have any other. Ride any other providers. So they will call the people and make sure that your appointment is straight, if we get a complaint that, hey, so and so didn't come pick me up this morning. And then we may learn that um they were scheduled for the ride, and maybe um the worker did not call them back to let them know, hey. You're scheduled with Tar River tomorrow, you're no longer riding with Fountain, and um be ready in the morning at seven or eight or nine, whatever the case may be. But to answer your question, Mr. Thorne, yes, we are investigating complaints like all day, every day. And we make sure to follow up on them all.
Sometimes it might not be a complaint, but you're supposed to make sure of it.
That's exactly right, I've had, and I have to say that, thank you for pointing that out, Mr. Williams. You are so right, because I've had been the riders to say, I don't care who I ride with, I don't care who you send, but I gotta dial and say tomorrow and I need to get there. And so we'll set them up, the you know whoever is available. Um so no, not all of them are complaints, actually, to be personally honest, complaints I feel is mostly the transition. People understanding that no longer um we no longer contract with Fountain, we are now contracted with Flowby. And so these are the two companies that you have, are going to provide service, I think it's just a transition. And you know, I remind everyone that Flowby just got a contract September the first. So it's the end of September, every company has its own problems. And so I think the transition is is going to eventually smooth itself out. We've been doing weekly field visits, I I would like to ask Mr. Williams to speak on that for you all, so you can have some level of comfort about that. Him and his staff have been hooking up the weekly field visits to Flowby, just to make sure that everything is in order, but um.
Flowby are not, Mr. Chairman, okay?
You're talking about her?
You're talking about your board, yeah.
Oh, yeah, uh-huh, yeah, I was talking about Mr. Williams.
Yeah, okay, that's your fault.
Okay, but um to answer your question, Mr. Thorne, yes, we all are investigating complaints, everybody's getting them.
Yeah, I did hear you make a statement that every startup company has problems. They're not ready to serve in while they serve.
Not, I didn't say they weren't ready to serve, I'm saying the transition. Well, let me rephrase that, it's the transition, Mr. Mr. Williams is gonna speak about the field visit, and that will show that there are no problems. With transportation, and so I will rephrase that and say that every company, every new company has um a transition period.
But I'm I'm still, I'm still asking you, why would they have a transitional period of of not fulfilling the contract? When the startup time is September one, and and they still got issues that they got to resolve?
Because the transition is accommodating the change in the providers. Getting people to to understand that Fountain is no longer providing the transportation service, you now have a new provider. And transitioning those folks over to the new provider.
One other thing, um does your, if your company have the same amount of vehicles available? As the one that you have?
Um I'll let Mr. Williams, Mr. Williams there, um.
Oh, thank you, we'll hold it.
All right.
Then, oh, when I did my site visit with Flow-
Give me the name and title.
Oh, sorry, Jonah Williams, Adult Services Supervisor for Edgewood County BSS. Um like Miss Battle stated, I have done several site visits to Flowby. Um the first visit I went on, it had about seven to eight vehicles consisting of vans, buses, cars. Um I checked the car, checked all the vehicles, um with some of the concerns we heard about. Uh all the cars, you know, they didn't smell anything, it was clean, um and it was they was doing a they was doing a cookout too to um. Raise funds to add T-shirts to the company, decals to the cars, which um they have at this point. Um Mr. Bornhill, he's been open to answer all questions, um and you know, he's trying to, he's doing the best he can. Since there have been in in business with us. Um so with my site visit, I haven't had any concerns. And we also um appointed one of our wo- our workers, our not ch- um excuse me, my transportation workers. To go continue to to do site visits as he continues to serve our county.
I'm still listening to. Probably a reason why they have discrepancy in in providing the service. You just said that they were doing the best they could, but is their best accommodating that?
They've been, they've been, they've been serving their uh needs pretty well to me, eh you know, like, it's been some good cups, but um. Like like Miss Battle said, when they off, you call them, you write on the phone with them, um if they miss someone, they'll go back and get them. Um so you know, it's it hasn't been, it it's been a, it's been pretty good, it hasn't been perfect, but it's been pretty good. He's doing the best, you know, like I why I say that, I mean, he's he's doing all he he needed to do for us.
That's kinda better what you said.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
But I think the question to you is, at this time, you satisfied with the contract?
Yes, sir.
I think it's our goal to satisfy the satisfaction of this.
You satisfied the requirements of the contract? You satisfied?
And and they they will be monitored throughout the life of their contract, if at some point. It becomes evident that they're not able to live up to the terms of the contract, the staff will let the battle know, Miss Battle will let me know. And then we'll decide that we need to make some transitions. So far, um I believe we smoothed out some of the bumps we've seen in that transition. Uh we certainly, to your point, Commissioner Harris, uh certainly next time, we'll make sure that we send those letters out more timely. Um uh but I think things are progressing better than than what we've seen. It won't be perfect, it won't ever be perfect, but I think they have progressed and improved uh a great deal.
Is anything else coming up, speaking to you?
No, sir.
And you all just hang around because we don't have public petitions, I don't have public petitions. At this time, if not, if you're scheduled appointments.
Yes, sir.
At this time, we have public petitions, and we'd like to open up public petitions, uh anybody please come forward, take the name of our business, public record. They they just, at at public petitions, we normally have three minutes, and we're gonna hold you to those three minutes. Uh uh the person will let me know if you three minutes is up. Uh please hold your comments for three minutes.
Mr. Mr. Chairman, if I could say, you have three people that notified us in advance of the meeting, that they'd like be scheduled to speak tonight, would you like to start with them, sir?
Please state your name, man.
Uh good evening, Commissioners, my name is Angela Bryant, I live at seven one seven West End Street, uh Rocky Mount, North Carolina. And I am here to speak to you on the issue of school de-merger or merger, as it would be. I'm one of the community leaders who's been working on the school de-merger issue uh and merger issue for the last year. And an urgent issue has come to our attention, and we wanna make sure it comes to your attention. And that this is a matter reva- involving the redistricting of the Edgewood County School Board as a result of the school merger. A problem has arisen in that, in the le- legislation that uh most recently set the date. Uh for the merger to happen and other parameters, and including the authority for the Edgewood School Board to redistrict. There was an oversight in that they didn't realize that the Edgewood County School Board election occurs in March. The um merger will occur in July, so the people who are merged in July cannot vote in an election in March. So therefore, they would have no way to participate in twenty twenty four elections for representation. A second problem is that even if we move the election to November. And you still have the same set of districts that you have now. The only districts up for election in twenty twenty four are in East Tarborough and Mathisfield, that would be Worsley, Privet, and Ellis. So therefore, the citizens in Rocky Mount wouldn't be able to vote for any representation of the people in Rocky Mount anyway. So there are kind of two oversights to this problem. And so a legislative action is needed in order to provide representation. For the citizens of Edgewood County that will be merged into the Edgewood County School District in twenty twenty four. Both to move the election, first and foremost, to November at least. And secondly, to require a plan that would allow all the districts to be elected in twenty twenty four. So that the citizens of Rocky Mount would have a choice on who would represent them in twenty twenty four. And it can be done similar to what was done in Nash County, in which the people who have terms expiring in twenty twenty six. Could be in essence, hell harmless, that is, they would not lose their terms regardless of what the redistricting plan might be. And it could still be done with the Edgewood County School Board having the authority to draw their own district. And so we're asking that you look at that, there are ten thousand residents in Edgewood, Rocky Mount, that will be merged. Into the Edgewood County um uh School Board uh District. Uh twenty percent of the new district will be uh Rocky Mount, and we think it's important, and those districts will need to increase. So we think that is important, and we ask that you uh take action for this to happen with the legislature. And for the School Board to have the authority to do what they need to do, thank you.
Please stay right there. There was community on. Five, which uh ten, and it was. You make that, I think you gave what you thought was a solution in terms of changing the, did you vote it, did you what?
Uh I'm suggesting November, I mean, you know, only because it's I know about elections and school and election boards in counties. Don't like additional elections they have to pay for. So the likely, the logical state place theme would be November, but.
I did, uh state legislature was there, Mr. Willingham and um Senator Smith, Senator Smith. And at that time, I I was taking this off the table before. And I did request that we look at it and 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 cause to see legislation. That would take some corrective action, but not take the furniture from the School Board to draw their lines. I still want the School Board to have the authority to draw their line, but whatever the legislation to do to progress. What was missed in there in that uh that that last legislation, so I wanted to bring that to the board in terms of. That was one of the things I had thought I was gonna raise to the board later, anyway, but it is an opportunity to speak to it now. In terms of how the board feels about it, once I know that I'm I'm a local. Plus, I know that I, I'm a local legislator, so I want to do anything they say. Unless it's the board has, has talked about it. Would you, would I be correct?
And 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 I just wanna emphasize that they need not only the authority to redistrict, but they need the authority to change the districting plan so that all the seats would be open.
And 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 that's still the authority of the School Board.
Yes, but they, they need the authority to do that, is all I'm saying.
And I'm saying that that's the question you've heard in terms of what the legislators, what our local legislature come up with and and conversations with our School Board, and that's something that is good for the board. Well, if we need, uh, uh, action on that, Representative Willingham, please do us so we take that, we take. So I think that this board is, while we don't want to do everything, but protect their authority, on the School Board, we do, Willingham and I, we certainly want the people of of Rocky Mountain represented in whatever happens, okay? Because right now, it would be a, an unrepresented issue in terms of what I said. And and if we need action, the board, if they will take that action.
Good evening, Commissioner, so when you sell me Waylane Tarborough, peel box thirteen nine one pine tops. Um, we're asking you to take whatever action you can, enforce the Edgecombe County Board of Education. Because until the merge of Rocky Mountain residents can vote, they have no representation on the Edgecombe School Board that would decide their rights and their fate. The only representative they have elected that can help them are on this board. Their county commissioners, the Rocky Mountain City Council, the Nash County School Board, and their state legislators. Please take action now to make sure they can vote for School Board representation in twenty twenty four after they get annexed. There has to be legislative action in the next three day, three weeks to move the election and require the School Board to redistrict with a plan that allows Rocky Mountain to elect representation in twenty twenty four. You are one of the only elected voices that these citizens in Rocky Mountain have. We need the School Board to demonstrate the same transparency and concern for the Rocky Mountain, Edgecombe residents that have the right to vote for their new School Board as they have shown for the assignment of students to the newly merged school facilities in the district. Thank you.
Good evening, County Commissioners and Staff. My name is Natalie O'Ree. I live at seventeen thirteen Beverly Road in Rocky Mountain, North Carolina, in the Edgecombe, um, side of the Nash County school system, which has decided that they would no longer be embracing us, and they are, um, releasing us into your loving care. Uh, well, we are already in Edgecombe County, but at the School Board, um, they're, um, relieving us of their responsibility for our children. Therefore, we are raising the sound, raising the alarm because we do not want this policy to come into effect without voting opportunity for the citizens in the Edgecombe County area. Um, a lot has gone on, and a lot of people have been asleep at the wheel, and they're waking up after the fact going, you know, what happened? And we don't want that to happen again. So we appreciate your attention and anything that you can do to help us in this process to make sure that those, um, Edgecombe, those ten thousand citizens who have a right to vote are considered in the future in a timely fashion so that we will not be behind the wheel. Thank you for your attention. And I am a four H, uh, fa- former four H student, and I also had a four H club for over ten years in the Edgecombe County. So thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I, I thank this board, it's one of the rules, that's that, uh, along with our School Board. I think the School Board, certainly we will, we listen to, uh, our request along with our group session. Anybody else to speak?
Good evening. My name is Kelvin Barnhill, owner, operator of Flowby Incorporated. Just wanted to introduce myself to my company to let you guys know and everyone know that we are here to help, support, help serve the individuals in Edgecombe and Nash County, um, in transportation. We have been doing transportation for quite some time, uh, doing services with, uh, mental health. A service called MTM. We provide services for transportation for those individuals as well. And we're just grateful to know that we are able to come here and support, uh, Edgecombe County in doing our transportation along with DSS. Um, working together as a team is very important in supporting our individuals that we're serving. Um, as we alluded to earlier, yes, um, it may be a lo- a few, uh, transitional issues. Uh, but granted, those issues have been smoothed in out, smoothed out, and we're moving forward. Um, just wanna let you guys know that we are here to support the individuals every day, uh, along with DSS and doing what we need to do. Thank you.
From the lines, two one seven shop pine top, North Carolina, two seven eight four. Yeah, she said she been getting a complaint about trains. I was the one that told y'all when I was riding train van and my arm on my truck got damaged. And my arm had been there, my arm would have got hurt. I called Inion, and I told them what happened. And this what was told to me, as I told you before. She said, we don't have insurance to cover your truck. And then on the second time, this chair here got messed up. It was a, they messed up the coil. I called in for that. Once again, she told me they didn't have insurance. And she said she sent out a note for us. I been at damn shop for twelve years. I did not get no letter. Stayed there, couldn't no longer ride, um, Forton Transportation. I haven't gotten that out. I'm gonna read the line. I didn't get no letter. But when I called her, was talking to her about the rides, and I thought I would like to ride transport, Forton Transportation, this is what she told me. She said, you ride Forton Transportation, you are paid for. And I hung the phone, but, but I felt like I had the right and authority to ride, you know, the van we like to ride. Why should we just throw us out and let's, let, like, we wanna ride Forton Transportation. Why is it a problem we can't ride Forton Transportation? When Forton Transit, Forton Transportation come in, I start riding Forton, rocking my train, and I got on Forton. And I've been satisfied. And I feel like as long as I'm satisfied, I should be ready to keep riding that van. You, I, I got, by me not going to the doctor, right now, my blood pressure is a hundred and forty eight over one. I shouldn't have to suffer because I can't get stuck and get my mouth. And like I said, when I ride that van, I got scared that they was going home on a Friday afternoon. That later on the van, I'd kill us all on that van. And I'm scared to get back on Forton, on Rocky Mountain train van. And I shouldn't have to do that. I should be able to ride and be comfortable going back and forth to the doctor. Shouldn't have had to live like this. They send to her saying they did this to their us, and they did this. No, they're lying. They not, they did not do. And I called him and made them to complain, and she said I did, but I did. I really did. Thank you.
Who did you talk to, man?
Sir, I can't tell you who I talked to. All I know, when I called to, uh, Rocky Mountain trains, I talked to the di- the dispatch, and I told her about my truck. And she said they didn't have insurance to cover my truck.
Let me say this to all of us. When you talk to somebody, you need a name.
Yeah, I, I, you're right. I learned that.
You, you, you need a name. You need to know who you are talking to. And they can't give you a name. You need to call somebody on that person. There's a way to get what you need. All you need is a name. And 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 if you don't get a name, you don't get nothing much less.
You're right. I learned.
And 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 that's why I was asking, who, who did you talk to?
Sir, I cannot tell you who I talked to. All I know, I called him, I called him twice, but I can't tell you who I talked to. But the only thing they told me, they did not have insurance to cover the wheelchair.
And 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 see, that's a dismissal statement to tell you that.
They told me that, so they did not have insurance to cover the wheelchair.
I wish I did.
It was Rocky Mountain trains told me that on my phone.
But I don't have a name.
No, you don't.
And 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 I'm saying again to you, whoever you talk to, anybody, whoever you talk to, you need a name. And write that name down and identify that person. Cause there are some things you just don't tell for. And that was one of the things that they shouldn't have told.
Was told to me.
They don't have insurance.
Nope.
What they doing operating with all these humans?
They told, that's what, I'm, I'm repeating what they told me on the phone. Then like I said, and I.
I wished I, I wished I had a name. I could hear.
I know you do. I do too. I do too.
If you wanna come and pick up a petition, please. Mr. Barley, come speak.
Are, are you done?
You're done.
Respectfully, um, I'm, I didn't wanna speak again to refute, um, the citizens' claims.
But we're not here to put you in the adversary.
I understand. I, all I, all I wanna do is explain our process when it comes to something like.
Explain your process. You got your process, my friend.
All right.
Okay.
All right. All right. Thank you, sir.
But you still need a name. Whenever you got a complaint and you make a call, you need to know who you are talking to. And that's so important.
Thank you for telling me. I love that time.
All right. Is anybody else here to speak?
My name is Anthony Davidson. I live six twenty five East Olive Street, Rocky Mountain, North Carolina. I'm here with a complaint about this new transportation system they got going on. It sucks. I was supposed to have surgery last week. They called in a week ahead of time. They said, oh, somebody be there. When? Know they called me again at eleven thirty. The people at the hospital had done canceled the, the surgery. Rescheduled me. I'm sitting there hurting. I'm still hurting. But they said, oh, we, we got ample transportation. We're gonna take you soon. Yeah, you gonna take me to hell if you don't, you know, come and take me to the doctor. And the other day, they, they sent out a van, broken windshield, dirty, stinking. The door, the front wasn't open. The guy was stinking, the van was stinking. And, you know, and they said, he, Jonah Williams said, he, he had pecked at the vehicle. You blind? This guy said he had just got hired that morning. They must have picked him up the, up the dump somewhere. And his van also. And they talking about the providing, uh, uh, adequate transportation? No, sir. The first time I rode with this company, lady, they said, well, I'm in front of your house. I said, I am too. She said, I'm in Tarborough. I said, damn, I, I live in Rocky Mountain. She said, I'm sitting in front of your house, but she's in Tarborough. This company that we're dealing with, they got more than just some flaws. They iron it out. They don't have the courtesy to call you, they'll call you, uh, after your appointment is over. Uh, uh, we got somebody coming to pick you up. Uh, a couple of weeks ago, went to Raleigh in their van. Driver stated that he had reported that one of the tires had a nail in it. And he noticed that morning. They told him to take the van anyway. They go to Raleigh, I go see his doctor. And on the way back, tires flat. Gotta get out there, we beside the road. He's changing the tire. Then the donor don't have an air. It go blue, to the blue, to the nearest gas station. Come on. Who, who was the person that expected their vehicle? Huh? They should have a system to where whoever hired this company had somebody to go and really check out their fleet of vehicles. And check out the drivers. They had no safety precaution. They put me in a wheelchair and I'm sitting crossways in a chair. And I got bad legs. I need to stretch them out. You understand me? And, uh, if you can't be comfortable going to the doctor and you scared to ride in these damn vehicles. Hey, might as well just use one of them shovels you got. Get, get, get them one of them shovels you got right there to dig a grave for you. Cause they're unsafe. They don't lock there, don't strap you in like you should be. And he, they send that courier. And, uh, for you, Mr. Williams, you know, you and I spoke last week, okay?
Please, please speak to the board.
Okay, I'm speaking to the board. I spoke to him last week about this transportation company. He said, he see, well, he just now, he said, he don't see nothing wrong with it. He told me a different story. He's like most politicians. You know what they do?
Which are true.
They, yeah. That you, that you tell the truth. Politicians are lawyers about the fact. Yeah, okay. Okay, but you know what you do though. Once you get an office, you, you fine.
Yes, sir.
You done told that payment when you got there. Yeah, good. And even like I say, y'all, y'all need to investigate this company more. Cause somebody get real serious hurt riding, some of the duck drops they got. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Just, just as you have accused us of not telling the truth, again, when you talk to whoever you talk to.
Get a name. I just said, didn't I just tell you a name?
And 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 I hope that that investigation would be, we've gotta treat people right.
Yeah, well.
And and and.
I did, didn't I call a name? I said, Mr. Williams, right there.
And Mr. Williams said that things was okay.
Yeah.
You said they're not.
I tell you, he's just like a politician. And him.
With the one. And and I say to you again, over and over again, need a name. Somebody needs to address. Things just don't happen.
Tamika Brown, ten twenty nine Moore Street. I was the one that was up here talking for, for found transportation. Miss Betty Battle, she don't know what she talking about. That woman ain't telling the truth. Cause I don't talk to her. She's smart mouthed, because if you don't like what you, what she want you to say, she's gonna give you smart mouthed. Me being from New Jersey, I'm gonna give it back to you, baby. I'm gonna give it back to you harder. Because Rocky Mountain Transit, they don't even need to be working. Number one, they say they pick you up according to your appointment. Y'all see that gentleman sitting right there in the blue, in the red and blue? I live with him. He gets up at three o'clock in the morning for a six, what, fifteen appointment? Every day. And half of the time, he don't even know they out there. He wakes my twenty year old son to go lay in the front room on the couch with the door open so he'll know they out there. They don't blow no horn, and they don't call. The only time they call, we was outside, we gone. We're not coming back. And they don't come back. This other transportation, Flow Rider, I wouldn't say put in nothing, they ride. And my first pickup was in a woman's car, a black Camry, tinted windows, smelled like sex and weed. Now, if they out in the field, he don't know what they doing when they out there in that field. He don't know when they parked waiting on somebody, what they're doing, if he ain't in that van with them. And 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 the whole thing is, it's always, she said, point system. There ain't no point system. There ain't no point system. Money talk, shit walk. And that's what that is. Because she sit in her office, she ain't out here, she sitting in her office pushing papers. She don't care, cause at the end of the day, she getting where she gotta get to, working wherever. She making her money. We are in the hospital, we don't have the. I just spent from last Tuesday up until last Thursday in the hospital. Because I don't have normal transportation. Any two times you get dropped off at the doctor's office, I sit in the chair for four and a half hours for dialysis. And then when I get off, it's people at my dialysis office right now. The only reason they're not here to speak up is cause they scared if they open they mouth. How they gonna get treated on Rocky Mountain Transit? Them old folks don't like riding on Rocky Mountain? They scared. The first thing they tell me is, Tamika, if we was like you, if we wasn't scared to speak out, we would. Why not? I am forty two years old and I ain't never been scared. I ain't scared of but one person, that's Jesus. And it it's not fair. If they not out here, you sit out there at a, at a doctor's office and you wait. Or you get this phone, you get this one, you calling ask whether they in there, oh, they had a wreck. So now you sit in there, waiting until they get you another van, you don't know what time that's gonna be. You don't know. Cause you don't know who coming to get you. All they say is, we gonna get you another, another, we gonna get you another, we gonna get you a van there. They ain't gonna tell you no different. And then you call Rocky Mountain Transit. And Tammy up there at Rocky Mountain Transit. She one of them folks that you just need to take out the the building instead of outside. Cause that's what she need to be at her way home. She don't even be running nothing. These folks that just got up here and spoke, they don't know what we go through. They don't know. They're not sitting in these dialysis chairs. When we get out of those chairs, we ready to go home and eat. We can't eat in the morning. Because we on dialysis. We sit in the chair for four hours and the impossibility in them four hours that we in that chair. Our blood pressure drop real low. Some of us sugar drop. Then we gotta get ourselves together, get up out those chairs to go get in a van that ain't out there. You gotta wait two and sometimes when I was riding Rocky Mountain Transit, cause I refused to ride them. I was on, I was at dialysis one day and got off at three o'clock. I didn't get home until five. Oh, we was, I'm sorry, they had me tied up. If you got so many clients, don't you think it would be best to have more than one? Company? If you got that many clients and you dead busy, cause Flo Rob ain't doing jack. Cause don't nobody wanna ride with him. But instead, he said, Mister Will said he go and inspect. I need his eyes to inspect what he inspected. Cause I inspected, not good. I inspected rudeness, nastiness. These folks don't know what they doing. And yeah, as he said, companies have little quirks. No, that's not quirks. That's a problem. Because I'm gonna put it to you like this. Would you? Would you put your child on that?
I I can speak to it, I'm not believing it.
But no, 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 that's not what I'm saying. Let's see if your child would like to ride on a van vehicle like that.
You gonna have to wind up.
I'm done, cause you gonna see me again. And I'm be here every time till y'all get something back and let these rascals go.
Hi, my name is Stephanie Cherry and I live in Tarboro, I live on, um, between Princeville and Cunha. So I live in Milton. Um, this is the first time that I ever had to ride transportation because I had a few surgeries. So when I did call, um, social service to set it up, I asked them, did they have anybody other than Tar River Transit? Only because my son used to ride Tar River Transit. And I didn't like, uh, the way they would come, have you be ready two hours early. For somebody like me, that's not moving as well, that's a bit much. So if my appointment is at eight o'clock, I have to be sitting there ready at six, that's a bit much because you can come at any time. And so that's why I stopped my son from riding because they would pick him up and drop him off when his job wasn't open. And he's like sixty black man standing somewhere waiting for a job to open and I felt that that was unsafe. So when I chose to ride, the first thing I asked the young lady, I forget her name, but they only had like. Two workers that answer at social service and one sounds really young, I forget her name. But when I called, I was like, do you have anybody other than Tar River Transit? Um, and she said, yeah, and she said Fountain. So this is my first time ever riding transportation. And I can honestly say, I really do like Fountain. Um, I like their professionalism, I like that they 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 call me and let me know when they are on their way. So and I was going to third piece, I would always, um, set my appointments at eight. They would come and get me there and they would wait for me because nobody else had an appointment. And I can't really sit in certain vehicles, so they would, um. Make sure that everything was well. So with them not having, um, Fountain right now, okay, so we had to switch. So in my switching. I had some important appointments, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, I was supposed to be in Raleigh. Monday, three hours, Tuesday an hour, Wednesday an hour. And I called social service ahead of time on the fifteenth to set it up. The young lady was professional at social service, I knew she handled that because we talked and she let me know that she sent the information over. To the new company. Well, when I didn't hear from them Friday, that's oh my gosh, I should have called on Friday, I didn't hear from them. I said, okay, well, maybe they gonna do me like Fountain and call me Monday morning and say, we on our way to pick you up at such such a time. I didn't hear from them, I called them. She said, oh, I didn't get the information, um, and she blamed it on the worker at social service, which I knew that wasn't untrue. She said, oh, she didn't send it over, so when people do add on, she's supposed to send me another call. But I called social service on the fifteenth and I knew that young lady had handled her business because she knew, she called me back. Because she knew when I left her message, how important that call was. Okay, so I let that go, so in the middle of that, had to get somebody to drive me because this was an important appointment, couldn't be, um, canceled. So Tuesday, I said, okay, well, she set it up on Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, so Tuesday, I didn't see I would have a problem. Cause I talked to the lady, her name is, hi, Ica. Hi, Ica, that work at the new company? Something, okay. So Tuesday, I didn't think I would have a problem, I had to be there at one o'clock. I didn't hear from them. So when I called them, she said, I said, so what time y'all gonna be here? She said, oh, let me, let me call you right back. So she called me right back and said, all of my drivers are having problem with the dump. So I said, hmm, so I said, okay, so I said to my niece, let's go. Because I had to go back because I had some kind of dye in my body. So she called me, she said the driver's on his way, I'm on a highway. She said the driver's on his way, so I said, where is he? She said, he's on sixty four. And I said, is he on the five fast or coming the old way? Because if you put my address into your GPS, thirty seven sixty nine, US Highway sixty four, alternate east. If you put it in your GPS, it's gonna take you to Rocky Mountain. So with them never having been to my house, I don't know where he was headed. So I told her, I'm good. I said, I'm on my way. And then she blamed it on a girl at social service, so what I did in my car, I called the young lady that worked at social service. And I let her know that she was being thrown under the bus and the lady told me that she called her supervisor. I said, check and I know that you handled this accordingly. And I would have felt better if the person at this new company would have said, I apologize, it was our mistake. I'm sorry, we trying to get some kinks out, um, there with us. But instead, she just totally lying and tried to throw the worker at social service under the bus and I didn't appreciate that. So I'm wondering, you know, what's the issue? And then I asked her, I I let her know that I couldn't really sit in a Tar River Transit type seat. And she said, we we riding cars and something. And so I I never had any experience with them, my experience with them wasn't good. Because I felt like they lied and they threw a good worker under the bus that I have been, uh, dealing with since I started having to ride transportation. And I can honestly say for me, Fountain is very good and I like their own personality. I I like because when I first started riding, I'm gonna be honest, when they wasn't, when they did have to leave me a few times when I first started riding, never having to ride transportation. I would call back and I would be like, where the driver at? And they would be like, oh, she'll be there in fifteen minutes, fifteen minutes, I'm calling you back. And one thing I I really liked about Fountain, and I told any driver that I ever had with them, and I even, I'm an equal opportunity person. If you give me good customer service, I'm a compliment you, if you give me bad, I'm a report you. And I can honestly say, I know I have a tone and I have an attitude sometimes. And I don't care who I spoke to, their 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 tone has never changed with me or anything and and I know I'm a liar. And so I could be, and so I just really with y'all looking, Tar River Transit, that because, not Tar River Transit, Fountain. Only because it's causing a lot of issue with people that they already had, riding, that they was already used to. Now it's like it's creating so many issues at this point, but thank.
I agree.
My name is. My name is Brenda Wiggins Davis. The young ma- the young man in the wheelchair, I am his caretaker and wife. You pray for me. Now, I don't wanna be redundant. But I promise you that every complaint you have heard here today and every concern is real. From the beginning, we didn't know that Fountain was no longer going to pick us up. We got that message the morning we called to confirm that they would be on the way. And they said they can't come, they lost the contract. So. We called DPS S. DPS S said they would send somebody out, but by the time they got there, it was too late for him to go to that appointment. I think DPS S should have given us notice before September one. We didn't get notice until September twelve. Also. I've called all these people in this letter. Nobody ever seems to be at their desk.
Ma'am, can you change that microphone real quick?
Nobody ever seems to be at their desk. But I li- I talk a lot. I don't mind talking out the message area and explaining myself. Trying to get you to understand that there is an issue I want you to address. So, I did, I left messages with Mister Williams, Miss Stewart, Mrs. Fox. Miss Mayfield, Miss Dupree and Miss Mary Harper. Now, Miss Mary Harper has called me back and Mister Williams has called me back. And I know he is remembers talking to me on the phone. But like I said, these are serious issues that my husband has and these people. I heard someone say that they have four to five hundred people a day that they have to address. That's an overload. Why don't we have two companies assisting DSS? And if we can't get two companies assisting DSS, why can't we fault Flo B? And change them out until they can handle the load. I don't wanna sound redundant, but it's serious out there. Thank you.
May I clarify a number that, um, she just mentioned? So I think that four hundred, five hundred number was from Mister Gordon with Tar River Transit. I think he's referring to their entire service area, not just Edchcombe County and not just Medicaid Transportation. They provide transportation for other things as well, so I just wanna clarify what that.
Um, no ma'am, we we have at at least, um. Five to ten vehicles that serve Edchcombe County. Uh, we have thirty two vehicles within our fleet, twenty nine of them are wheelchair equipped. And so we, out of that, out of that thirty two, at least, at least ten vehicles serve Edchcombe County. Oh, no ma'am, um, all all of the vehicles I mentioned, they they perform Medicaid transportation.
Well, let me kinda sum up what I heard. And and I I it it does feel that we do have, uh, some issues and they are, as you said, change. We gotta change. But according to what we believe, this, I understand this works. Tar River Transit. Uh, and we have, uh, a contract, okay, that. Based on what has come to us, that they stand and follow the process to get this fee. So. What we do have, Tar River Contract, provides our transit will be, as our contract. And ladies and gentlemen, right now, until such time as. Uh, based on your complaints, our staff has investigated those complaints. And make a determination, Flo B is our contractor. You know, I've heard it that. They they are our contract, until such time. As they have, as as this, as information comes to this board. From our investigation and from our staff, to make a determination of that is our contract. Now, I've heard some of you say. And the third option is available to, uh, our residents that use this service. And based on what Mr. Evans has said, you know, all of this is federal and state, like a federal and state law. He said, Minister about Tar River, and we have a contract. And we have discussed the options, the state degrees of privacy, options are being known and the contract. That question was raised with our board, within our board, we've talked about that. And your comments on that and say that's right.
Well, overall, I think, uh, Miss Battle mentioned we have three hundred and some clients currently who we. Who are using Medicaid transportation, whether it be either of our two contractors. Um, the more contractors that you have providing that service. Um, then the fewer customers they're able to transport, potentially transport. And and at some point, it has to make business sense for the company, um, to be able to have the fleet. Hire the staff to be able to do that. I will say that, um, Miss Battle and her staff in in their, uh, research, since we've started discussing this. Most counties surrounding us only have one provider. And that being a regional provider like Tar River Transit. Um, so it is somewhat, uh, somewhat unusual, um, for us to have a secondary provider. I think it's, you know, now I think it's a good thing for us to offer that as an option and we're glad that we're able to, to offer that as an option. We'll continue to monitor both our, both our service providers and try to address any issues we can as quickly as we can. We'll continue to monitor both, both our service providers and try to address any issues we can as quickly as we can.
Past relationship with. Fountain, Fountain. We can't base, who we get based on what your past relationship was. If they do not, if they did not come out of that bidding process, uh, we can't just go out and get them. Who you think we owe to them as a provider? But with your continued input in it and that, if it's, if I was to have determined that it's my work, then we would have to make some decisions. Until such time, I don't have to say that you would, if you board, that's different, uh. They have, they have followed our process to obtain, uh, that contract until such time as we get information.
It not fair to, I'm sorry, but it not fair to, it is not fair at all.
That time, that you.
We don't get a ride, can we call you?
I'm sorry, but it's not fair to.
I need somebody to ride me now.
You know what?
It's not fair, but we.
But I, I'm, I'm.
It's not fair though. I'm sorry, but it's not fair.
Please hold your comments, please.
I'm sorry, but it's not fair. I can't, I just can't say it like it's, it's not fair. It's not fair.
That, that's where we are.
No, 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 it's just not fair though. It's not fair.
You're wrong.
It's not fair. It's like y'all.
See, y'all sitting up there, y'all get to make the decision. But y'all ain't in the.
Y'all have to ride it, right? We have to ride those things. We have to ride those things. Should be like you.
I'm gonna have to ask you all.
Well, sir, I'm sorry, I'm not disrespecting you or nothing, but it's not fair.
Yeah.
It's not fair.
It ain't.
It's not fair.
We got your people.
You don't have to ride those things. What you doing? What you doing? I feel like we should have some say so. I'm sorry, I'm not disrespecting you or anything.
This board has never done.
But we, we, y'all wrong.
I have a question.
Y'all wrong.
Can I ask you a question?
Y'all know, y'all is wrong.
Hold on a minute, hold on a minute.
They're wrong.
I understand.
That says a hundred and eight and you're gonna tell me what I can't do? You're wrong.
I'm gonna tell you out of water.
Maybe that's cap it, but you wrong.
All of you out of water.
You wrong.
Please refrain from an outburst.
You wrong.
Yes, I'm pleased refrain from outbursts. You guys want it? Moving on to the next agenda item, Mr. Evans.
You're wrong.
Next item is, uh, under other businesses, consideration of budget amendments. You have a number of amendments for your review. You'll see that budget amendments numbers one through four are those that require your approval. Um, I'd be happy to answer any questions which you might have, but I would recommend that you approve budget amendments number one through four. Remaining over your information.
Is your motion?
We'll be back.
Second.
No, you won't. You got the chair, y'all got everything, go ahead. Take over. You go ahead.
Here we go, sir. Question?
Number one. Yes ma'am, so you'll remember at last month's meeting, you approved, uh, a memorandum of agreement with the, uh, State Department of Public Safety. The state is appropriating a hundred thousand dollars to help us with debris cleanup from the July tornado. Uh, at that meeting, um, we said that, uh, we believe, including the cost of, uh, tipping fees at the landfill, it was going to be much more than that, around three hundred thousand dollars. Uh, so the two things that I recommended to do at that meeting was to, number one, approve accepting that hundred thousand dollars from the state. Secondly, to appropriate fifty thousand dollars from fund balance to help cover the difference. And third, to waive the tipping fees at our landfill. And that was with understanding we were requesting funds, additional funds from the state. And if we receive additional funds, then we will then reimburse ourselves for those tipping fees. And I was going to mention it later, but I will mention that we have got some funds appropriated. We have been notified, we're getting some funds, additional funds from the state. So what this is, this is a budget amendment to formalize what you agreed to be.
More questions? All of the people, everybody, my folks.
Hi.
All opposed?
Just one comment. I just want to thank the staff for, um, elaborating on purpose. I really, I think that's a great clarification for our budget.
Sure, thank you.
Next.
Um, item D is regarding approval of land transferred to Edchcombe County ABC Board. Uh, it was brought to your attention at your March meeting, uh, that Edchcombe County ABC Board has requested land from the county for the purpose of constructing a new warehouse. ABC Board asks that the county donate part of a parcel the county owns at the corner of Anaconda and McNair Road. You authorize me to proceed with determining the exact location and layout to bring back for your consideration. Attach us both an area map as well as preliminary site layout map. Uh, we have here tonight, Mr. Shep, Representative Sheldon Willingham, who serves as Chairman of ABC, Edchcombe ABC Board, uh, who will present and discuss the proposed use of the facility and answer questions you may have. I do recommend that you approve the donation of the lot to not exceed three acres to Edchcombe County ABC Board and authorize county attorney to prepare and need to execute the necessary documents.
Yes, sir. Your meetings are about as exciting as I, I was in Raleigh. I lose my voice here. Uh, what we're requesting is this land to build a warehouse and what this will do for us for ABC system. Uh, if we have a warehouse and what this will do allow us to buy products, more products that we can sell, uh, at, uh, prices that we get when, uh, the liquor goes on sale. Every other month, liquor goes on sale for the ABC system. The distributors and the stillers, they have, uh, discounts that they give. And so if we can purchase more, we have somewhere to put it, we can sell it. Uh, right now, of course, we get a truckload every, well, we get two, you know, truckload every week. Uh, if we were able to store, uh, more, uh, product, then of course we can sell more. Uh, and then of course, if we get, uh, the product when it's on sale, then of course, when it goes off sale, that's every other month. And of course, this would mean that, uh, the bottom line would be, you know, uh, much bigger. So i- it's, it's really simple. We just need a place to put more product, we can sell it if we can get it. We just haven't been able to, uh, be in a position to, uh, buy more product and have somewhere to put it. So, that's why we're requesting this and that's why we need, uh, the warehouse. Right now, what we do, we store, uh, the product in, in two of the stores, and one here in Tar River and also one in Rocky Mountain. But that's not enough space.
Second. Second.
Does that have any questions? All of the people, everybody, my folks.
Hi.
All opposed? Thank you.
Next on the agenda is regarding addressing, uh, our fleet needs. Um, as we discussed at your last meeting, we are considering options to meet the fleet needs that we have, especially for the sheriffs on the coast. Sheriff Atkinson has a relatively large percentage of high mileage vehicles on the road. Based on the information he and his team provided, we need to acquire at least twenty new vehicles to get this fleet to a more reliable state. One option that has been presented is to lease those vehicles. At your special meeting on September nineteen, you received a presentation from Mr. Benjamin Crothime with Enterprise Fleet Management. He shared the benefits of leasing vehicles and the potential costs. You asked that a more specific proposal be done so you can see the actual cost for the specific vehicles we would lease if we chose to go that route. That update is pro- is provided here in your packet. I've also included a copy of the proposal presented to you at your last meeting so you can refer to the details of the lease program. There are benefits to leasing vehicles that, to meet our needs, uh, fleet needs, including assistance with finding vehicles for purchase, assistance with the management of the fleet, and more frequent turnover of vehicles. However, the ongoing annual cost of leasing, in this case, four hundred and thirty-four thousand, three hundred and forty dollars for twenty-eight vehicles, in light of the additional costs we just encountered with implementation of our compensation plan, prompts me to recommend another approach. As you know, we plan to soon sell our ownership interest in a building in Rocky Mountain that has been occupied by East Point to Nash County. The offer for our forty-five percent ownership share is two million dollars. I recommend that we use one million of that plus the one hundred and twenty-five thousand we already have budgeted for cars to purchase approximately twenty new vehicles for the sheriff. That would include also upfit for those vehicles. We can also internally improve our tracking, maintenance, and turnover of our fleet moving forward. My staff and I certainly stand ready to implement whichever option that the board chooses. Uh, I do want to, uh, point out that Mr. Crothime or Enterprise Fleet Management is here again tonight in case you have, uh, any, uh, questions with that. Um, also add, just for your, uh, awareness, if you do choose to go, uh, to, uh, instruct staff to proceed with leasing vehicles, we will have to get that approved by the local government, uh, commission. Of course, that means we'll have to apply to sit before them, uh, this procedural step. Just add some time to it, um, but I just wanted you to be, uh, aware of that. Kevin, any questions that you might have?
And that means that it's open for board discussion in terms of hopefully going to do here that, let's just see what the manager of that command, all those amounts, we see purchasing, putting vehicles in the sheriff's office. How do we establish the management to proceed with this, uh, open for board discussion?
That's probably the most vocal opponent for leasing vehicles on the board. I'll kind of start us with, I'm still in favor of leasing the vehicles. The system that we have now is not working. And so we have with the sale of this building, the ability to fund a lease program for twenty vehicles plus the other county vehicles that Enterprise is requiring and see if it works. I mean, we haven't had that ability in the past. We've never had that ability with how we budget for vehicles in the past. So why wouldn't we give it a try and see how it works? Um, every other county, every other municipality around us is doing it, so there must be some validity to the program. The city of Rocky Mountain is taking their entire fleet to do it. So they obviously believe in this program. Um, so that would be my, my recommendation to the board. My other recommendation to the board, if we want to go with a lease program, since we have the upfront cost to do the upfit, we should pay for the upfit, not in the lease. We shouldn't finance the upfit in the lease because then you're paying interest on the upfit. We have the cash, so pay the upfit with our cash and then finance the vehicle just like you finance a normal vehicle. And if you look at the menu pricing, you see where they broke out what the actual car is versus what the lease is with the upfit. So they were financing twelve thousand dollars for upfit. We wouldn't need to finance the upfit in the lease payment because we're paying for it in the cash. So that, that's what my chart here says. Um, the real breakdown of that is over the three-year period, you save seventeen thousand dollars so you could really uptip one more vehicle and have five thousand dollars left over by paying for that in cash, which we have the ability to do. Or will have the ability to do.
And, and I think I take the position of, um, the manager's recommendation, while the budget is ours, but we, we charge the manager in making sure that the budget is balanced one. Uh, I'd like to see, there's one question I thought we would, um, we've got a two-point-two lead.
Thank you, Marky. Inexcessively.
Inexcessively, so let's, let's don't leave that out there. Them, them expected this, okay, okay. For, for sale this building, all right?
Yeah, that, that was the offer that's been communicated certainly to.
But that was the one that we talked about, okay, let's leave that, that's an open question in terms of, okay. But my recommendation, I think you see, but, but it appears that the manager is on board of making sure that we get some vehicles for the sheriff's department. Uh, but it's kind of, it's kind of waiting until such time as, as we get what we expect to be a sale of the building. But I'm supporting the manager's position and I think we need to give from the board in terms of, we need to give the manager direction. And the direction is how, uh, we decide that we're going to proceed with that. Any other, uh, public comments from us? Because I, I would like to see where we get it.
Mr. Rogers, may I ask, uh, our attorney question?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Peters, in regards to that money that should be coming from East Point, can you give us, I mean, I, we, I think I termed that pretty much accurate, should be coming.
From Nash County.
From Nash County, okay? Uh, any timeline of that?
No, sir, you know, we, we hope it will be soon, we hope it will be in the next several months, but we can certainly. You have an ongoing discussion with Nash County.
And I think he's exactly right, but we are, we, you know, we, I think we're closer than we're worth based on the way sort of the legal action has gone. And that was because of some legal action, but, uh, I wouldn't give a time, frankly, in terms of the, uh, I think we were expecting it in the next six, eight months, but that could not be done.
Yes, yes, sir. I understand. Well, I'm going to really say something that's really out of character for me from my own personal experience because I would not dare lease a legal vehicle, but I'm on board with Mr. Thor. Uh, Mr. Evans wants to get off the list. And, uh, so do I, I want to get off the list. We've been talking about the sheriff's, uh, needs. And this waiting and see, we, we've been waiting and seeing ever since I've been on this board. And whatever we got to do, I, 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 I mean, I, look, I'm, I'm sitting here kind of like a pendulum doing like this. But i- i- if, if we can go ahead and lease and that's the quickest thing to do, then let's do it. That's my take.
I guess now the question, go ahead.
We can't do anything until we get to East Point, right?
Well, it's not, it's not our problem, East Point, we can, no, we can do it. We can do what, he gonna do whatever we say.
Okay. But are we gonna say we need to do something now, uh, that's without the money from East Point?
That's, 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 that's what's on the, that's what's really on the table, uh, rubbing hands in terms of, when we give the manager instructions to proceed with their lease. And based on that, he has a, he's probably going to have decent budget amendments. And other things done to make it happen, but that's a question that, that you can help us where you are and where you support the manager's recommendation for, whether you're talking about leasing, then that would help us give him a sense of direction. That's just where we're going to go with this.
But my question still is, can we do anything without East Point?
Yes, we, we can't, we can't.
We can't.
We can't.
Okay.
We can, we're not, it's not really, East Point is, is the sale of our land, uh, to, to Nash County. Sell the building. Anybody else, I'd like to hear from the board.
I've spent a great deal of time thinking back and forth on this thing and like, Mr. Webb, I'm offended and swings back and forth, but at the end of the day, I want to say I'm going to support the leasing plan. Uh, I don't think it's any short-term benefit for us, it's a cost of, only I think it's a long-term gain overall. I believe it will actually help us improve our cash flows and take our million dollars dedicated to the cause. But I just think overall, and, and like Mr. Webb, I would personally never lease a car. It's just not good for my situation. But in this particular situation, in an attempt to continue to have cars of, of at least read this in good shape from the sheriff's department, not eventually pay other departments. And instead of counting on a wish in your hand, you can get a check for one point two million dollars or five, that word, or two point two or whatever. Uh, but I don't see it increasing that much power. Our cash will be budgeted at least, um, versus other, but I just think in the long term, it's maybe a little bit less.
Uh, my concern was based on the loss of, uh, we're reduced to the loss of federal goods and charge and obviously any of the dollars. Uh, the loss of that income is due except on this, this expense, yes, that's, that's my concern.
But we're, we're literally talking about leaving money that's coming in from the sale of the building to fund this. His purchase for twenty vehicles is coming from the sale of the building. So we can just take that money and budget it right up front to spend, to spend on those cars.
But what happens, we don't get the money in six months?
I mean, you could tell them to authorize it as soon as the money comes in, that's our, that's our decision. Once the money from the building sale comes in, we could authorize it. It's my understanding that we have plenty of reserves to do that and then fund. It's my understanding that we have plenty of reserves to do that and then fund, just move it back to the fund balance. I think we're on rate of twenty-six percent.
I'll, I'll give you a.
Sure.
Well, I don't like putting the part for awards. I don't trust that we're getting money from that guy. And, uh, I'm not personally against it. Um, I, I believe the manager has taken all into consideration the way he made his, uh, what it's all be offered.
My suggestion, can you take it?
I, I too can. That could lengthy conversation with the question maybe after our course. I can go along.
Well, you're right.
So you're saying that we can do what we need to do for the sheriff before we get the money from East Point?
Well, my recommendation was to wait until we got that money. Now, you as a board can decide that you want to go ahead and pull that money from fund balance if you want to. Uh, that's certainly up to you to decide to do that. I would need you to, to be part of your motion if you're gonna make a motion to.
Where, where, where would we be if we got the money from fund balance? Where would fund balance be? Would it be according to steel, according to where the state wants to be with fund balance?
Well, we're, we're well above the requirement for the state, which is eight percent. At the end of our twenty-two audit, we were a little over twenty-six percent. Now, we did, uh, we did cut into that two million dollars here recently with our compensation plan. That's, that'll, that'll be ongoing. So, uh, that's about three percentage points, four percentage points on our unassigned fund balance.
So we still, we, we still pee where the state requires us to be with our fund balance?
You, you will be well above. You, you'll be well above that whether you choose to spend the money for purchase outright or you chose to, to lease vehicles. We, we would still be well above that eight percent, yes, sir.
When is our sheriff, is our sheriff having an opinion on this? Of whether he would, he wants to just leasing or purchasing?
Well, I'm, I'm.
I know, but I, I have my own little opinion.
I'm, I'd be cautious to try to speak on, on behalf of him. I know he is, and, and his staff have discussed leasing as an option. Uh, have discussed it with, with the company Enterprise. And I know he, he wants to have a more reliable fleet, but I don't want to sit here and speak for him and whether or not he prefers leasing or renting.
Yes, I want to make one comment. Um, just keep in mind again, thank you, uh, Ben Krathimer for helping me out. Um, you won't see these vehicles for several months, so keep that in consideration when you're budgeting. And then when you get those vehicles and they land, let's say January, February, you're only gonna be responsible budgeted for the remaining months of fiscal year. So if you don't see those vehicles till March or April, you know, just, uh, prorate that, so keep that in mind. It's just important to get those vehicles on order. And again, some, some lead times are six months out, so we just want to be proactive.
And that's, uh, just a function of finding the vehicles and then being.
Finding vehicles, arranging upfit, um, manufacturer cutoffs. We're in an order worker strike right now. So it's more than ever just trying to need to be proactive. So what you're actually budgeting for, it might come in this fiscal a lot less just based on inventory and when those vehicles deliver. But just as you know, same with Rocky Mountain, we just need to start looking for vehicles and sourcing them.
Question.
Yeah.
When would you expect a check from?
You don't, it's, each vehicle is its own individual contract and we don't require a check till the month following when a vehicle delivers. So if you don't take delivery for, let's say, vehicle A until March, you'd get your first invoice, your monthly invoice, uh, the following month. So nothing would be, uh, there'd be no invoicing, no billing until vehicles start delivering. We just need to order them or start sourcing to find them. So we could sit here in six months and have not collected a, a thing of that.
I'm, I'm supporting the idea of getting the vehicles for the sheriff, but the sheriff has, has asked.
And, uh, we're, we're, they're talking, they're talking about with a lease agreement or supporting my management's recommendation.
What do they, the management's recommend?
I just want to say one more thing. We already have a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars budgeted for this. We've got four thirty-four, three hundred and nine thousand dollars difference. One hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars ahead on, on sale back to, which we can only put aside. And it would be much easier to plug all of what they, what a building they sell with budget than we can with three hundred and nine thousand dollars.
Management has recommended to authorize the management to proceed with the purchase of twenty vehicles and shares of.
Approximately twenty, as many as we can get for one million, one twenty-five.
So my suggestion on that is the sheriff need cars, okay? And so it does not appear that we didn't talk to the lease agreement. And I think that authorization is to be seen, excuse me. And what will they given the management offer to see with the purchase of those vehicles? Okay, proceed, proceed with, you, you're saying with more than twenty, we have authorized to do, to see what we can do in this budget. And that's, that would be mine, even if that's recent. Now, do we need a vote? Do we need a vote on this? Is a motion to authorize the management to proceed with the purchase of twenty vehicles for the sheriff's office? Who makes the motion? Is that separate? There's several questions. All in favor, let me know by the votes I have, all opposed. The motion, the motion approved, most of them. No, no, motion.
I mean, what?
No, no, she did, she was.
No, I was going with lucky that.
Yeah, she was from the other, she was from the other. The motion, the motion, uh, passes. Moving on, next on it.
The next item on the agenda is regarding, uh, provisions to our compensation plan. At your September meeting, you approved the implementation of our new compensation plan. Since the new compensation plan is such an overhaul from a previous one, we continue to review it to see if there are any errors to fix or changes to make. After review from our department has, we have the following update for your consideration to address those corrections and changes needed. Attached is a summary of those changes, which present no additional appropriation needed to the budget. I recommend that you approve the updated compensation plan ordinance as presented.
Motion. Second. Question. All in favor, let me know by the votes I have, uh, all opposed.
Um, item, uh, attachment number eight, uh, item E is regarding urgent repair. We've been awarded six to seven thousand dollars from the North Carolina Housing Finance Agency for the urgent repair, uh, program. Recommend that you accept the award by approving the grant agreement and project ordinance as presented.
Questions? All in favor, let me know by the votes I have, all opposed.
Um, item, uh, F is regarding, uh, Target Transit for a rural operating assistance fund. Uh, Edgcombe County is eligible to receive these funds to, uh, assist residents with transportation through what's called the rural operating transportation fund. We partner with Target Transit to apply for and administer these funds for us. We will have available a total of one hundred and sixty-six thousand two hundred and eighty-four dollars, that should be. This covers three categories of elderly and disabled transportation assistance, employment transportation assistance, and rural general public assistance. I recommend that you approve the submission of this application to authorize me to execute the enclosed.
Motion.
This controls the most hours at the first.
So this is outside of Medicaid. Medicaid is a separate funding source. Medicaid is, goes through the process of scheduling through our, but they are paid directly through the state. This is other rural transportation, and so they have to report on how many, uh, residents, Edgcombe residents that they transport using these funds. Uh, they have to make sure that the resident is, uh, using it for the eligible use. Uh, but they report to us, I believe, on a monthly basis, how many, uh, citizens that they transport.
So we've received, they have to answer what they need to receive a monthly call, yes, on how that money used to be.
That's correct, yes, sir. Yes, sir.
That's the first time I've, I've get out of here, we, we, I'm not gonna ask. How many Edgcombe citizens are asked for utilization?
Any other question? All in favor, let me know by the votes I have, all opposed, kinds of acts. But the most, we got. Keep me straight. Most, most, seven, seven, okay, now a question. Now all in favor, uh, you said we know by the votes I have, all opposed.
Uh, the next item is regarding surplus of, uh, vehicle and computer equipment. Uh, you have for your consideration the following vehicle that is listed in the attached list of computers and related equipment that now have exceeded their useful life. I recommend that you approve surplus of the above vehicle referenced in the list of computers and related equipment as presented.
Second. Second, question.
My question is, who, who has the hundred and four thousand, uh, twelve passenger van? Are both of them together that you have?
Uh, it, it, it's one vehicle. It's a four van, a twelve passenger van. It has a hundred and four thousand miles. It was a corporate extension, but.
You have a question? All in favor, let me know by the votes I have, all opposed.
Uh, next item on your agenda is regarding the twenty-twenty-two water assistance management, uh, plan. We've received notice from North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality of a grant award for the twenty-two water asset management plan. The award, uh, which is funded with federal ARCA funds totals three hundred and seven thousand two hundred and fifty-five dollars. The project will locate and survey locations of all water distribution assets not currently mapped. Infill inspections of platters, storage tanks, booster stations, and chemical feed stations, and create a hydraulic model of the system. I recommend that you approve the enclosed resolution and accompanying grant project ordinance as presented.
Motion. Second. Question. All in favor, let me know by the votes I have, all opposed.
Uh, next item is similar. This is from the same funding source, uh, for sewer system study. Uh, again, federal ARCA funds totaling five hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars to, uh, it will locate and survey sanitary sewers, smoke testing of various sewer mains, CCTV, uh, closed, closed caption television inspections, along with various, uh, inspections and assessments. I recommend that you approve the enclosed resolution and project ordinance as presented.
Motion. Second. Question. All in favor, let me know by the votes I have, all opposed. Motion.
Uh, next, we have a, uh, a special use permit application, uh, received from Barnhill Contracting Company. Um, it, it will, it is requesting to expand their permanent sand mine of Ellis Lane. A public hearing is required. I recommend that you call for the public hearing at your November meeting.
Motion. Question. All in favor, let me know by the votes I have, all opposed, so you're gonna just call, next.
Um, this is regarding the CBG Neighborhood Revitalization Program application. We talked about it a couple of times. Um, as staff continues to work with our consultant to prepare an application for the N C Department of Commerce's Neighborhood Revitalization Program, one critical action is needed from you at this meet. Uh, just as a reminder, this program can fund various housing, uh, uh, programs, uh, and services for primarily low to moderate income families. Uh, we are considering preparing and submitting an application for what we refer to as scattered site housing rehabilitation. In other words, not a group of houses in one place but scattered across the camp. Uh, the application must include potential recipients. To select those potential recipients, you must have a housing selection committee with bylaws and guidance, which is included for your consideration. I recommend that you adopt the housing selection committee bylaws and guidance. Also recommend that you call for the final public hearing to be held at your November meeting.
Motion. Just second. Question. All in favor, let me know by the votes I have, all opposed. Time.
Yes, sir, Mr. Jim, um, like Miss Braswell?
Uh, planning board meeting was held on September eighteen. And, um, the purpose of the meeting, there was a training session conducted by Chad Meadows of Co-Lite Planners. So no action is needed by the board, nor by, for your information. Okay, thanks.
You have the list that releases approved. Anything that we brought to our attention?
No, sir. I could be answering the questions, if you have.
Is there a motion? Question. All in favor, let me know by the votes I have, all opposed. And all this group contract for review and approval, anything you brought to the board, questions?
No, sir. You have a list there that requires your approval and one for information.
And a question on this, on the board?
I did. Um, the one with the sheriff's department. I would do the conference, I'd do the good stuff. Um, but I, I still try to determine why we are paying three deputies. I mean, we're paying salary, insurance, you know. I checked with the law, law camp. We don't do that. So I was wondering why. Cause I mean, why do we have three deputies? Why we pay them?
You mean what, this, what, so the sheriff?
For this, liver papers and everything.
For child, and this is child support related.
Right, that's right.
Well, it was, it's bad.
Okay, so according to the sheriff, he has, that's how many deputies it take to serve the papers. We serve a lot of papers and child support all over the county, outer county. And according to Sheriff, um, Agerson, he, he's, I guess, assigned three deputies to perform that service.
You see, to me, I, I, I felt like it's a contracted service. Those employees were sheriff's department. They don't work for the event. So why are we paying salaries? I mean, and neither one, all three of them are giving salaries and benefits and travel. When I looked at the total, I didn't, I didn't, I don't understand that.
I think, I think the question, what is the source of money for this? Well, it might, it might be the source of money that we're talking about in terms of how that money comes to us. And to contract a like that, and that's the challenge, that's asked now to add. We, we might be a cost factor because it would be getting, or maybe some cover of state funds.
It's on the second or third page of the contract, the breakdown of how the money, like, what percent, how much is the county, how much is federal, how much is state?
Yeah, I, I think it's the same as in money, the way that it's done, uh, if you, if you're, that's gonna be this conversation I had. Somebody, I can't, I can't remember. And I think that's, what it, what it appears to be, is, is county contracted with county services, but the cost of this is, is a matter.
It looks like we're spending thirty-three percent of it and the rest is federal.
Exactly.
Zero state funds.
So the state, the federal government, we get reimbursed for those positions at sixty-six point sixty-seven percent. If that's what you're asking.
And that is the reason why we see their contract service, rather than just having deputies assigned to that responsibility of the sheriff's department. It's bigger so that we can, we have that big, you know, the source of.
Okay, now, I want you to take a look at, um, this page on the service program description. I'm trying to determine if the dates are right. We'll pay from, um, page eight or thirty, consider the effective date, first day of July twenty-twenty-two.
That's wrong.
And Shelby team to June of twenty-third.
That is a typo.
Okay, so that needs to be corrected.
That needs to be corrected.
It says, that's, that's Shelby vote. One hundred percent of their professional time, the service is set forth of disagreement. Okay. We sure that's all they do all day, every day.
We.
Three of them.
We, well, we're sure that they submit monthly reports saying that's what they do all day.
It's about like, yeah, any other con, comment for you that you don't know what they're doing all day?
Well, no, see, I, I've seen the list before about how many papers went out, how many didn't get served. And you got three full-time deputies. Not a single paper should get served.
Well, sometimes, and I, I'm sure the sheriff could tell you this as well, the papers aren't getting served because the men aren't presenting themselves available. And so, you know, they tell us that they can go to the home, and if whoever answers that door.
That is true.
Yeah, so. But we still have to pay for them spending the time to serve that paper, e- even though the individual wasn't actually served, so. Sure he could speak.
You don't look at it when I see the definite. You ain't paid no support. I come to the door.
I know there's one reason, um.
They get paid for their attempt.
Yeah, they get paid for their attempt.
Alright, alright, but just make sure on that page eight, the whole set anybody else can get that, if they hear straight.
Okay, yes, is that the only, okay.
Is your motion, is your motion to approve with the corrected date?
Yes.
Okay, did you get a second on that?
I second.
Question, get another question. All the people that you know about votes out high? All opposed? You're none, next on the follow-up, uh, uh, there is, uh, for, for the question. It was a typo around the area, era, where you got, you know, big, uh, county man? Yeah, 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 yeah.
Or where?
It's already across the region. Uh, follow-up report, uh, anything that we brought to our attention?
Um, you have, uh, the water and sewer, um, update report in your agenda packet. Um, also, I, I do want for item B, the monthly financial summary, I would like to call Ms. Linda Barfield, our CFO, to give you a brief overview of that report.
Good evening, commissioners. So with our, um, monthly financial report that you see in your packets each month, we thought it might be a good idea to kind of go over some of the numbers to kind of put them in the context for you. The report was designed to look, or similar to our ordinance. Revenues are gonna be grouped by type and expenditures by department. The intent of this report, um, is to show our stakeholders how our budget compares to, um, our actual. It shows how much money we've collected and spent thus far this fiscal year. And this helps us keep track of our fund balance, which in turn helps us make decisions about budgeting, saving, and managing taxpayer funds effectively. You will notice that our revenues seem to lag behind our expenditures, and this is true for two primary reasons. First, um, our DFS and health rev, health programs, along with many of our grants, are reimbursable. That means we have to spend the money upfront, and we get those costs reimbursed usually a month or two, um, after we've done the spending. Also, uh, we follow the modi- modified accrual accounting method, which basically means that many of our July, August, and even some September revenues went back to June. So for our sales tax, for example, you'll notice that there was nothing shown reported. Um, that is because for the funding that we got from July, August, and September, I'm sorry, for April, May, and June sales were received in July, August, and September. And so we put those back against the twenty twenty-three fiscal year. And the other two pages are, separated them between our, uh, general fund and then our proprietary funds, water and sewer department, and solid waste. If you have any specific questions about them, I'll be glad to, to try and answer them. Uh, I guess I forgot, okay. Um, I'd also like to take this opportunity to just, uh, give you an update on our annual audit process. Um, I'm pleased to announce that we are on track. We're, we're doing really good. We've had two onsite visits already. Had a lot of, um, good feedback. And we are geared up and looking forward to getting the audit, um, completed and submitted by November thirtieth, which we think is, is a reasonable timeframe. And so just wanted to let you know that that process was well underway, and so far, um, everything is, is looking pretty good. So we still have to wait to find out the final result.
That means if you get an audit, and you, you'll all to a good start.
Absolutely, and that's, and that is, that is my goal.
You can, you can do everything right this year. If you don't get an audit, you're everything wrong.
I got you, I got you, and that's my sentiments exactly.
I want to know about utilities, uh, up to date.
Yes, ma'am. We, we are balanced in July and August. We've got them, I think July's balanced, and we're working on August. Yes, ma'am. We are not behind in any bank statements.
Well, thank you for that.
Thank you.
Uh, 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 politicians, thank you for that goodness you were.
I'm sorry.
I was trying to think, and we're up to date on what we owe to our ass, we've got that.
So, um, that's a good question. Yes, we are up to date. I will say that they are backlog. So it takes time for them to go through and update those processes. But we have spoken to the IRS supervisors and agents directly, and we are, um, expected, as soon as they get all that keyed in, everything will be where it needs to be. So yes, I could say that we're good with IRS.
So, so we can be on time, we gotta wait on.
Uh, actually, yes, yes.
We can't, we can't.
We can't be late, but they said it was such a backlog, and they could not guarantee when it would be done, but that, um, basically, um, we're not in any kind of enforceable status, and they have what they need. It's just a matter of them getting it all keyed in. Thank you.
Uh, next is update regarding tornado debris cleanup and tipping fee waiver. As I mentioned a moment ago, you approved at your last meeting, last regular meeting, to accept the hundred thousand dollars from the state appropriate additional fifty. You voted to waive tipping fees, uh, for, for vegetative debris cleanup. Um, we have been informed that with the most recently approved state budget, that it includes three hundred thousand dollars additional funds to come to the county to help us with, uh, debris cleanup, not just vegetative debris, but also construction and demolition debris. We have, uh, a few properties out in the area that were affected, that were either uninsured or underinsured, and, and, and therefore they will need some assistance, not just removing the vegetative debris, but also with removing some of the construction demolition from houses and other structure that, that were, uh, damaged on their property. So we're grateful to have, um, three hundred thousand dollars for that, and I know Representative Williams Ham's not here, but I know he was very much instrumental in helping us, um, with getting that. In fact, his staff reached out to me and asked for some numbers, uh, on, of the funding that we needed, and, and, uh, so we want to thank him and his staff for assisting us with that. So, um, um, our staff is, uh, meeting, uh, Antoine and his staff, meeting with the contractor, the debris cleanup contractor tomorrow morning, I believe it is. And so we should in the next few days have a date of when that's gonna start. Uh, they will communicate directly with, uh, residents who were affected to let them know, you know, this is when it'll start. Uh, we've already communicated where they need to put debris, but we'll remind them of that, just to let them know what to expect from that. Yes, sir. So at this point, being that we now, or we expect to get funds from, additional funds from the state to not only help cover that gap that we already knew we were gonna have with vegetative debris cleanup, but also some funds that will allow us to clean up construction and demolition debris for those who are uninsured or underinsured. Um, I recommend that you extend that waiver of the tipping fee to include construction and demolition for those that were directly affected by a tornado that are uninsured, underinsured. Um, would be my recommendation.
She wasn't picked. Is that motion to review? Is there a question? All the people that you know about votes out high? All opposed? And the motion of those to take their votes together?
Uh, recommendation is to extend the waiver of tipping fees to include, uh, construction and demolition for those uninsured and underinsured.
Do I have a motion? Second question. All the people that you know about votes out high? Uh, all opposed? You're not a good group, we'll go.
Uh, you have in your packet, um, a, a new Edgecombe Soil and Water Conservation District newsletter. That's something new that they're doing, and, uh, Scott was here earlier, but, uh, weren't, I think they did a really good job with that, and so thank them for.
I'm afraid all of them. Give them insight into what they're doing.
Yeah.
They do a lot of things that.
Mind that, yeah, they're, they're biz out.
Yes, yes, sir.
Um, uh, unless you have any questions about department reports, I'll move on to just comment. I know you got that, um, cut off before the water update, and I sent it to staff today, but just for the record, just wanted to state in that report, this month, we had a three percent water loss, um, three percent. Um, I asked Mike Matthews to give me some context of what that looks like for a system of our size. And he said we should be targeting for twelve to fourteen percent. So that's how well that department's really doing. If you really think about actual numbers, not just percentages, I know we can talk about percentages all day. Actual numbers, that means that that department brought us in eighty-five thousand, three hundred and nineteen dollars and twenty-five cents in additional revenue just by water loss. So, may I put us through?
Paul Mosley, who's our utilities director, is here, and I know that there's a lot of sweat and hard work, uh, behind, uh, bringing those percentages down. I want to say thank you.
Still is, right? They, they chase, they chase them.
I had zero one time, so I'm just saying.
On day one.
One tip before you turn it off.
Just, just, just before they gave me the job. Go ahead, Mr. James.
Um, under managers' report, you see there have major events updates, and remind you, this is not an exhaustive list of all the meetings that I may have had or attended, but just some of the major things, I want you to be aware. Have workforce development indicators, a monthly tourism development authority's, uh, financial report. Um, this is the same report is presented to the tourism development authority, and I want you to have a copy of that as well. Um, item D is an update on FY twenty-two state appropriations grant. It, I mentioned a moment ago, one thing I, I forgot to mention. In addition to the three hundred thousand dollars we've been made aware that we're gonna receive to help with, uh, disaster recovery from the tornado in July. Also in the state budget is fourteen point two million dollars to do, uh, to increase the sewer capacity at Kingsborough Industrial Park. As you know, for a long time, we've been working very hard to chip away any of those boxes that get presented to us when a client comes and sits down at a table that we can't say yes to. Um, and a lot of work, investment, and thank you all for your, uh, commitment and vision and foresight about Kingsborough. It started twenty years ago plus. Um, one of the last things that was left hanging out is we have enough sewer capacity, um, to cover usually one of the clients that we talk with. Um, but we don't have enough sewer capacity to cover two or more large clients at Kingsborough. Um, also, we want to make sure that we are able to say to these clients, and, and Mr. Bob Pike is here tonight, we want him and his team, when they're talking with clients, to be able to say, look, we already have funds in hand. And so that was something that we have pushed for, had a lot of conversation about, so very pleased to see the state, recently approved state budget, fourteen point two million dollars to, um, to increase our sewer capacity at Kingsborough. It usually takes a couple, two or three months before paperwork comes, so you'll, you'll be seeing, uh, grant agreement and such be coming back to you at, uh, at, at some point. But with that said, you know that we received some funds last year as well, and this best is gonna come to give you, um, an update on our FY twenty-two appropriation.
So the first amount, um, can y'all hear me? That we received, we received a million dollars, um, in that grant for costs associated with the QVC fire. We have already been reimbursed, um, we have reimbursed ourselves this amount for the direct cost, um, and revenue loss. This was helped, has helped to fill the revenue gap created by the QVC fire. Um, the second project under the grant was the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars we received for the QVC employment, employee support program, which we submitted that, um, running, funneling those funds through the United Way, and we've reached out to them. They're still working out. They have received the funds, and they're gonna get a report to us that we'll update with you at a later time as to who has been, um, helped with those, with those funds. The third project in the grant was the Leggett Fire Station to complete the needs assessment and engineering and architectural design for the fire station in town of Leggett. This is also complete. We've also been told that there's one million in the new state budget for construction. Um, and we will use the balance to do the demolition and land prep. Um, this project was for a million dollars, included the Leggett Fire Station, also includes the evidence processing and storage facility, um, for the sheriff's office. That was for fifty thousand dollars. The needs assessment has been completed on that, and we are seeking funding options for construction on that. The Edgecombe Animal Shelter, we received seven hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. We, construction costs of the Edge, for the, uh, for the construction costs of the Edgecombe County Animal Shelter, total estimated cost is one point five million. We plan to use those funds for land cleaning, site preparation, and connection to utilities, and we will soon present a funding plan to the budget committee for construction of the animal shelter. And then the last, um, amount that we received, the one point five million of the fourth project in the grant, was for the fire and rescue equipment at Kingsborough. Um, we have purchased one truck. We have purchased equipment for the other truck. Um, and also are working to order turnout gear, the second truck, and equipment for the second truck. Are there any questions?
Mr. James, can you give us that number for the animal shelter?
Yes, so we received seven hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for construction costs of the new Edgecombe County Animal Shelter. The total estimated cost is one point five million, um, which the balance will be matched by the county.
It's actually, I may have made it wrong. It's actually, right now, we're estimating four million dollars for, for construction of the, uh, animal shelter. And so of that, the seven seventy-five that we have in hand will go towards construction. We want to use that to get started on land clearing, site preparation, connection of utilities, and those kinds of things. Um, and so then we are looking at, uh, recommend this to be something that board can discuss more, but recommend that, that two plus million dollars from Nash County, uh, that, that we use at least a million dollars of that to go towards construction of the animal shelter. And then the balance of that, um, we borrowed that, that from, uh, USDA Rural Development. USDA Rural Development has a community facilities loan program. This would qualify for that. Uh, you can get terms extended thirty years.
I think this one was twenty.
Twenty, twenty, twenty years. Uh, interest rate's right at three and a half percent. That service would be manageable on that, but, you know, we, I would say we discussed that a little bit more. So, uh, it's, it's good to know, and for the public that are here, that have been interested to hear about our plans for animal shelter. I think we're getting close to, um, to moving forward. And I did share the plans for the building to, with the animal, uh, welfare advisory council at the meeting last week. There are a few more I's to D's to cross with that, you know, but we're, we pretty much know we've got a building now, planned for a building, that's gonna cost us around four million dollars, um, that we believe will be, uh, good size to accommodate current needs, plus expansion. Also gonna be following, having a conversation with the town of Tarver, now that we have the number, to see what level of participation they might wanna have if they still.
So, one point clarification, it's two million dollars more for Leggett Fire Department, not one day in the new budget, but kind of gone through yet. So that would be three million total for the Leggett Fire Department, three state appropriations.
And also, if I could add, my understanding is that that's gonna be given directly to Leggett Fire Department, not come through us.
I think it has to go to our fund out, but I guess you.
And do they have a timetable on it?
Um I I think as soon as the money is available, they're they're ready to move. I think they're pretty squared away on their plan for what they want to.
And then just a kind of a clarifying point to what you just were stating, and I went back and pulled the pulled this as well. Um that we're allocating one point one or one million of that mu- money from the sale of the Nash County building for purchasing vehicles that we just voted on.
He recommended, that's what he practically said.
That's that's what he recommended and that's what we voted on tonight. Okay, in his lease, in his proposal and attachment, he said that because of the cost of the compensation plan, he doesn't think we can budget it, and now he's asking for money, that money to go towards the animal shelter.
He said, he, we outstated one million of the two we go toward the vehicle.
Okay, and so then a million towards the animal shelter and then we're, the the concern is just the budgeting for the compensation plan?
Well, I I think my my point was that, my recommendation was to use these funds we expect to get from the sale of that building instead of pulling it from fund balance because of the additional cost that the compensation plan has added to us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um update on a uh on the county line merger, briefly, I'll mention that the uh Edgecombe School System had uh the second public meeting last Tuesday at the DS Johnson um Elementary School. I think it was well attended and some very good questions were asked and answered, I believe. Um as as you all know, and to make sure the public is aware, we are planning for a joint meeting of the four boards, and those four boards being uh this board, board commissioners for Nash County, Edgecombe and Nash School Boards. We're planning for that meeting on October sixteenth at seven P M at Rocky Mountain Events Center. The purpose of that meeting is for all four boards to hear presentation from both superintendents and their staff about their respective size of this transition plan that's being drafted and finalized now. Um we won't be asking the boards to take any action on that that night because um we wanna make sure that you have plenty of time to ask questions at that meeting. If there are questions that can't be answered, we wanna make sure there's adequate time to follow up on that. Um and but what we are asking is that each of the four boards then at their regular meeting in November to um to adopt a resolution, Mr. Peters working with other attorneys involved, to craft a resolution, it will all be approving the same resolution. So we'll collectively be approving the the transition plan. Now, you may decide that after that meeting on the sixteenth, you might wanna have some more discussion. You certainly welcome to call for a special meeting if you need to outside of your November meeting or before your scheduled November meeting. But right now, the plan is to have that four board joint meeting on October sixteenth to seventh evening at Rocky Mountain Events Center.
I think I have that planned in my head.
So they are uh both school, the superintendents and their staff are to finish their reports and get them to the managers by the night. I think that's the Monday before. Um we will package those and get those out to you um um as soon as we get.
That's I for the, where, where you said it?
Rocky Mountain Events Center. Right now, we're planning for it to be in the Edgecombe one on the first level, but we'll confirm.
Sure, we only start not early than six.
Well, I, that's up to the boards, I would say.
Yeah, I I think it's real based on, yeah, up to the boards and and the and the problem might be a slight difference between whether it's going, playing figures, but actually isn't.
You gotta get a plan from both boards.
Both boards. That's right, and and that is discussing their side of the transition. So the conveyance of property from Nash Schools, acceptance of property from that kind of thing. So it'll be from their respective side of the transition.
Well, that includes the budget amount for that for that conveyance. Are we asking, or I'm sure Nash County's gonna ask us for money.
Nash County asking us for money? Yeah, so it will include the request for. Yeah, our our continued support of the students that will remain in their schools. Yes, sir.
Okay, but there's no, we wouldn't have to pay for the property that's in those schools, that's property of the students.
Yes, sir.
That's already.
Well, I will say, there's some, there's some discussion about property that was acquired through federal funds. It's been brought up in our planning meetings, planning committee meetings, that there seems to be a understanding that uh rules, federal rules that come with those funds, that any property that's acquired, that they can't be given, they have to be sold based on the appreciated value of property at the time. Um I think, um I don't wanna speak for all the boys, I think most of the people in the room understands that those funds for that that equipment and what have you in those schools was sent to Nash County School System for the benefit of those students, who then will become Edgecombe students. So I think in principle, it makes sense to, for those those uh items that were acquired for their benefit to follow those students. Um now, they are discussing that, can they do that, what, you know, what possible they have with that. I know Edgecombe School System folks were scheduling a meeting, I think they were having a class.
Maybe with with the state.
With uh folks from the Department of Public Instruction to hopefully get some guidance on that.
Yeah, yeah. It's 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 it is an unanswered question right now in terms of uh our position at the end. We don't hold nothing at that, only talk to officers. Okay.
Right.
We don't know what the question is.
They're our schools. And we just take their our schools. So you're saying there's a question? Whether or not they're teaching.
They're in the building, not the desk.
Yeah, not not the buildings, they get federal funds, most of it is what they call title, title one funds.
Right, right.
And they buy computers, desks, other things, you know.
They have, they have. They have the incentive to everything.
So that's my question was, are we gonna have to pay for that? Personal property, you know, kind of insurance, personal property versus property.
They might ask for it.
Well, I I I would say that 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 the tone of the meetings have uh supported of of what decision that, what what, the final decision that we get to allow. Uh I, it it's very promising uh that that there's some discussions that that um that and we're probably gonna be able to keep that. Uh it is surely another caution, we really talk, we talk about us all the way in terms of our try to get together. Uh and still, it is an unanswered question. Isn't that, that's definitely why.
No, I'll put here the same thing about school, but do they want that new sixty-six pass? Edgecombe is still a witness.
No, well, I think it's just a difference, I think Nash County's got more seven or two passes to bus it. And we're at uh sixty-five and our maintenance department cannot handle the seven or two passes to that. Okay, so that that still is an unanswered question in terms of what we're gonna do with that with that. But it's our our school staffs, uh Nash County and Edgecombe, their their maintenance folks, they're they're working on 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 how we can accomplish, how we can do that. And 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 just a matter of fact, uh uh the sessions that have been going very well and all the staffs are you know, they're gonna have a policy of seeing what they really, really can do. I think those of us that have been represented there for the county, uh I I think, I put out here, I told you, I didn't satisfy the the way we're gonna do it now, but far as I'm concerned, we're finishing where we are and 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 how we got, and what we think we're gonna be, but we might not, uh we're not there.
Well, we think we're gonna be there by October sixteenth.
Oh, well.
Until our ninth, so we have a plan.
I think might have some other answers, of course, that we have in terms of some of those, because they were giving some of those last week that we have not, that we have to go to discussion. Uh.
Sorry, I was just clarifying, that we we are expecting, we think that we will get those, all those clarifications.
We know we've got, well, we, I I'm saying that we we, if the state gives us, okay, they've had several forms of state that has changed. I I I would say it's not because of what our local folks are doing to get those answers, okay? I think some of the questions that they've asked, uh uh the state had to find themselves, okay, the track for that. So they're doing some research on that, that's what I think.
I represent company teachers.
And we, they've been having, even at uh in at the the, our county has done uh 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 somewhat of a slight change in our application process to accommodate any of those uh staff that might want to stay where they are, okay? But you know, it might not be enough vacancies in Nash County, all of them, and some of them want to stay anyway, they don't wanna stay where they are. Any other questions that might come to your mind about those discussions that we have at the root? But I would say, they show our staff what we can satisfy. When you get to a legal mission, you know, with the.
Do you believe in that report, uh staffing will be part of that?
Yes, yeah, they've they've already identified how many teachers will be affected, how many they need. Like, as Mr. uh Mr. Chairman said, that they've uh ex, they've now have an expedited application process. So for those who are interested can more quickly go through that that process uh for our services. Another question. Uh oh, no. Um I'll mention, we had uh some discussion at the last meeting about uh now that the sheriff is not ours, federal inmates, the budgetary impact that that might uh have on us. Um and for the sake of time, I won't walk through this spreadsheet, I'm happy to answer any questions that you have, but obviously, it presents some financial impact. Um I provide, the sheriff sent a letter today, you have a copy, I sent it earlier and you have a copy um at at your seat. Um you know, I think, you know, he, in his letter, he's he's saying that the reason was because of being short staff, need to be able to have enough adequate, well-trained staff to be able to handle our local um detainees and and then, which is our primary responsi, his primary responsibility. And so he talks about his staffing issue now, he mentions near the end of his letter that he is hopeful that new compensation plan will help to fill uh some of those vacancies. Uh I would suggest that at this moment, we just, we need to be aware of this. We need to continue to look at this, have conversation about this. Um I think we will need to at some point make some budgetary changes because right now, you know, depending on how long we don't have or when they may or may not come back, um we we're budgeting right now one point three million dollars um that we won't see that full amount for this this weekend. I don't see that you need to make any decisions about this tonight, just to be aware of this. Uh continue to have conversation with the sheriff and see where things go. Um and then bring this back for future discussion. Um also, you'll remember that in in your approval of our uh FY twenty-four budget, we included funds for umbrella of programs we're referring to as Edgecombe Works. One of those three new initiatives, what we're calling the Edgecombe Works Promise Program. This is a program that is a scholarship program that is um that is managed by Edgecombe Community College alongside their other scholarship scholarship programs. Our priorities uh for this are um all have to be Edgecombe County residents, unemployed or underemployed, um high school, recent high school graduates or county employees. So we budgeted seventy-five thousand dollars in this line for the community college to to manage for us. You'll see that for certain certificate programs, they can get up to five hundred dollars per semester. Um for other programs, long-term, more longer-term credential programs, up to a thousand dollars per student. Purpose of this is not only pay for tuition books and fees, but also to help cover some of those other costs as it relates to being able to attend and successfully complete school. You remember, we brought this to your attention, we saw it as a need because as Dr. McLeod described to us, there are many students that they may even get, say pale green or something else, but there's still some funding, financial gap there, we want to help cover those gaps. We want to help our residents to be able to get um credentialing, training that they need. Another gentleman from um my future NC talked about that statewide initiative, our goal to get more credentials in the hands of our of our citizens and that certainly will help with that. So I wanna say uh thank you to Dr. McLeod and his staff for basically taking the vision of this and and putting um meat to it. Uh this is now uh on the community college's website, I included a printout of their webpage. If you know someone who may fall into one of those categories, may be interested in this, uh they can go to the community college's website and see information on who they are, uh who who they should call about that. We'll have more information coming soon about the other two initiatives under that Edgecombe Works um program. So I think that's a great thing, it's a new program for us, it's a great thing for the county and and making available for our citizens.
Yeah, I would really point this Edgecombe Works, that when we say county employees, they're already employed, that probably won't have to be without.
Well, they could be underemployed, for example, you may have someone that's in a, I I'm just, maybe dangerous. Let's just say we have a customer who has aspirations for a better paying job um for, you know, for for their family, they could possibly get some training and credentialing to help them to get a better job. Uh we have training specific to acquisition. We also have some educational centers where you get an associate's degree, bachelor's degree, master's degree. You get a one-time bonus for that, but we have nothing in place where we pay for somebody to get training that's outside of what they currently do.
Another question. Get that from Commissioner?
Well, the last thing, Mr. Chairman, if I could, it's not on the agenda for manager report, but I do want to let you know uh we have a a firm that is interested in uh constructing, leasing from the county property that we own and uh constructing a communications tower. Uh they're interested in property that we own, and I have a map at at your place. It is uh at near Kingsborough Industrial Park. It is just south of uh QVC facility. You'll see there, it's uh it's separate from your agenda pack, and I think it was what you said, yeah, that's it right there. Yes, sir. And so it is just south of QVC facility, it's on a parcel that we own, it's right next to water tank that we have there at Kingsborough. And so they want to offer eight hundred and fifty dollars lease per month for a ten-year contract. Uh we're considering in that contract, option to renew three successive times at five years each. However, before you can consider to vote on this, uh statutes require that a thirty-day notice be published. And so unless you as a board are totally against this, I recommend that you at least allow uh staff to post this notice. We can bring this back to you at your uh November meeting for your consideration, if possible, for that.
This is bad, yeah.
No, sir, it's a small little sliver there, that 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 map might be a little small to see in this, a small little sliver.
They're not.
Okay, we'll post that notice and bring it back to you. And that's all I have.
Commissioners?
Yes, sir, if you remember, uh last last month, we were sitting here about the same time, I don't know, Joe. Uh hold it to next time, we'll, we're all at ten minutes. And uh that's the real thing I wanna bring you up first, is it's ten minutes past ten. We have two two um female commissioners who I love, we got six other additional females sitting here. It's ten minutes past ten, they don't need to be getting on the highway, ten minutes past ten, let them be walking out of this building. Uh my proposal would be, and I don't think it's for anybody, we'll talk about it later, but I think for staff, they're already here, I think our meeting time needs to be six o'clock. Uh, it seems like the agenda for each meeting continues to grow and grow and grow, and, uh, I, I just think it would be great if we met at six o'clock rather than seven, if we're gonna continue to be here. I mean, we, we, it's not fair to Mr. Pike, it's not fair to George, it's not fair to Glenn, they sit here just talking, that's all I'm about to say.
Well, you know, you're exactly right, and, uh, and I, I mean, I don't wanna rock my buddy's boat, if everybody wants to stay here and meet at seven o'clock, I'll be when you hear the morning breaks at six, but, uh, our, our, our newest person here was walking. If we compete at six, I think it would be advantageous to all of us. It's time to be, to be in here a little while, and we, we ain't even had supper yet. And we got a new, a, a, a guy over here that's gonna be a father, and I can tell you, his wife's gonna be all over his book. If he's home by this time, in the next few months.
Thank you, Mr. Mr. Well, I agree, I agree with it.
I don't think we gotta meet him before ten.
Well, we, we've had it. You know, or, or, you know, the, the other option, you know, what if he, he has one some more forward, which means we'll take care of all of the business of the county, and one of me, some boards, uh, I have, uh, I'm prepared to, I'm prepared to, whatever board. Especially my three commissioners that have, you know, Mitch. Is, is something that we have to take into account.
We, we do each December, and this, you know, correct me, I believe each December we set the schedule for a full year, so that may be an opportunity.
Well, it did, our suggestion is, it appears to be no opposition, you know, you sort of leave, we said next year's schedule, we said it'll make you schedule, and that's it. Here none appears that we're on board, and that would change, we would, you're right there.
Yeah, I found one, one other thing, uh, back in August, we had a fire down, I guess you could say, on my way, and, and even though I'm in the, uh, Maxwell Fire District, the call that I got from a concerned citizen was, uh, they were in the, uh, South Edgecombe Fire District. Uh, it was on a Friday evening, if I'm not mistaken, and I don't think I am, uh, the couple was, uh, boiling peanuts, and an outside uh, twenty-pound cylinder was firing everything, but all things, they had an underground, uh, five-hundred-gallon tank that decided its spring leaked, the tank, not, not the copper hub, but the tank itself, and so fire's springing up all over the yard and getting ignited. And, uh, the, the issue I wanna bring it up, and I brought this issue to Mr. Evans, and, uh, we got a response from Mr. Brown, and, and response was fine, but his response, he, is what has spurred me to bring this before you, and I was gonna ask some questions here. Uh, the, the real issue that happened was, uh, the, the home is in the South Edgecombe Fire District, and the South Edgecombe Fire District Fireman Three showed up, uh, on a personal vehicle. And after the fire was basically out, I think South Edgecombe finally did send a tanker after the fire was out. So Maxwell responds to the fire, South Edgecombe does not, and the person to the South Edgecombe did, so you know what their comment was? My money's going, if, if Maxwell's gonna be the one responding, don't get me wrong, he, he, he was very nice, very nice gentleman. He's, he's just thinking, okay, why did, why did Maxwell come, what happened to the South Edgecombe issue? And then of all things, the backup that came and backed everybody up was Bakersfield Fire Department out of Wilson. I mean, I'm sitting here saying, as a board of commissioners or whatever, manager, we need to send the Baker, we need to send Bakersfield some money. I mean, South, South, wait, South Edgecombe finally sends a truck with some water in it after the fire is out? The Bakersfield had to respond and back up Maxwell because they were the primary sponsor? Okay. You tell me, what his response was, again, this is it, and I'll come back. I'll try to get him in, no, uh. Mr. Brown's response mentioned the fact that a volunteer fire, fireman in all of our areas now is no longer what he used to be years ago, years ago, everybody wanted to be a volunteer fireman, now you can't find them. My question is, in regards to safety, has, has it dropped to such a low number of people wanting to get involved with like South Edgecombe Fire Department? Or, or, have, have we got an issue there? That's my question, do we truly have an issue from the standpoint that we don't have enough volunteer firemen? That we have a, need to be very concerned in Edgecombe County at this point in time, I mean, that, this just makes no sense to me. If, we either need to change this gentleman, we're talking about school districts, well, what, do we need to change our districts?
Well, I mean, you got a problem with all of the, of the, of the, of the bigger number one, number two, most of them now are unemployed. What's that, at least two people respond to a truck? And if that's what it needs to be, then that's what it needs to be. Y'all have mutual agreements, which I'm totally confused about, that, that isn't sold out, mutual aid, but Edgecombe County Fire Department is open to good reports.
Well, yes, what I'm, I mean, you got a few issues there, and, and I'm not upset with, uh, Mr. Brown's response to me, but he still is maintained with lots of questions. I mean, if Bakersfield backs them up and, and brings a, a fire truck with their individuals there to fight the fire, I mean, he sent a, a really nice letter in regards to why they had to let the fire, you know, kind of go out on its own, rather than start spraying, and understand that, I mean, you know.
Well, I think we've been attempting to address some of the issues, uh, what we're trying to do in Kingsborough, I think we've been talking about. Us having a fire department, central location in the, that we would stand, uh, and then our staff initiatives in terms of how we give up, uh, how we counted this, and being the backup, somebody to fight the fires, and sometimes I think we do have control issues as we live through the bad weather, and we're not getting the sparks from the volunteers that we used to, sometimes, or they're not, but I don't think this is the only case, this might be the only case that you know about, you're right, as it relates to that, but I think that we have, we have been talking about how we address any issue, probably with some Kingsborough side in terms of what we need to point there, that it comes to all the county to do the swap, or we back up the swap, uh, that we'd be able to, uh, assist all of the local managers. But I, I think there is a continual conversation, we need to have a board, and how we address it, and, uh, uh, from what I've heard, some previous stuff, I think we could address.
Yeah, well, I, I would admit it was a Fri-, but, you know, before I say I admit, it was a Friday night, and a lot of, you know, there, if you wanna hide anything, hide it in stow, because everybody goes out, you don't Friday night, you know, yeah, nine out of ten. And, uh, you know, so that could have been one of the problems, but, you know, the deal is, you, you don't know when you're gonna have a fire, you know, it's gonna be on a Friday night or a Monday night, and we just need to, if the citizens need to be alerted to the fact that we got a problem, then, we, we need to do something.
Sure, we're certain we'll, we'll follow up with that situation specifically, broader issue more generally, um, and, and bring something back to the board for you all to discuss.
The, the, the property owner that contacted me is, uh, you know, he's served on a fire department, served on various boards in county, he's a wonderful gentleman, and he didn't, you know, he didn't attack me, he attacked us, very, very nice. It's this young lady presented before us tonight, I, I just wanna do her, hug her neck and say thank you. Young lady was talking about school representation, for the first time somebody came to us tonight in a gentle manner and requested something, I wanted to kiss her. No, it was right, it was a lady on the third row, right back there, from Rocky Mountain. Bless her, bless her for not chastising us and knowing how to ask, you attract a lot more flies from sugar than you do with anything. That's my spiel for the lot.
This will be my last comment about cars for tonight. I would like to, to ask the manager to go ahead and appropriate the funds, the one point one-two-five billion from the fund balance, while, because we heard from Enterprise tonight, it doesn't solve the sheriff's issue, so now that we, I can concede that we're gonna purchase the cars, Enterprise told us tonight it takes six months to find a car, so then we have three or four months of negotiating with Nash County to try and get the money for it. We have the fund balance here, let's empower our sheriff to go find the cars now, we have the ability to let him do that, and then we'll figure out budget amendments to get it back into the necessary once we have the money for Nash County. But we did not make that motion, we made the motion to do it after he received the funds from Nash County. Well, that was his recommendation. Well, I just, I'm glad I clarified that, man, because I was under the impression that we were, we were using the Nash County.
It did specifically stated the amount of the two stages, okay, but it allows the manager to move forward.
I don't know what the motion says, you need to get back with it, I guess.
Yeah, I, I, that was not the way I interpreted the motion, I interpreted the motion that we, that we wrote, that we accepted the manager's recommendation to wait for the funds from Nash County.
Yeah, the motion said that might wait.
That's what his proposal says, that's what his attachment says.
The motion was stated, I read, I read the motion, I read his recommendation, his recommendation again was, was recommend, proceed, to, the most authorized manager to proceed with the purchase, put it there, put a chair for it, but it's in his time, their song, where he decide the funds come from.
And that's what I want to clarify, I would like for that timeframe to be moved up to now.
Well, you, you lost that motion, but we already proved it, unless we, you're talking about retorn, what we done.
Yeah, I'm just saying, I, I guess it would be a separate motion to say that we don't, it's not contingent on the sale of the building for Nash County, it's contingent on us just authorizing him to spend the money.
You know, it's, it's up to the board, but that would be, uh, pretty much undermined what we voted on.
Is, is it okay that, 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 for the board to say that there's a consensus, everybody agrees the understanding of the motion that was passed be to, for me to proceed now, not to.
Yes, I would, I would have an objection to that, and that would be, to me, as I was explaining, that was the challenge, if you could proceed to buy cars now, proceed to do that. But if it's given to us, and you just give it to us without putting a target in there, or putting a timeframe on it, well, it's giving it to us. And it appears to be no objection for proceeding.
I, I'll let you know, what we'll do is, we know the car, the vehicles the sheriff wants, we will proceed with the legwork that we have to do to identify, get quotes, those kinds of things, we will bring back to you at your November meeting a budget amendment to appropriate that for fun time. But in the meantime, we can start the procurement process.
Not what was proposed.